Hi there folks, I'd like to call the August 14th, 2019 meeting of the Willett City Council. Before we start, I just want to let everybody know that Councilmember Rodriguez indicated she has to deal with an emergency and she'll be right back. So, oh, she's back. Okay, alright, alright. So, pledge to the flag. Everybody please follow me.
Our pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every being justice for all.
Broke all.
Councilmember Connie.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Strong.
Mayor Strick.
Yes.
Here, alright. Item two, public communication. The council welcomes participation in its meetings. Comments shall be limited to three minutes per person so that everyone may be given an opportunity to be heard to expedite matters and avoid repetition. Whenever any group of persons wishes to address the council on the same subject matter, the mayor may request that a spokesperson be chosen by the group. This item will be limited to matters under the jurisdiction of the city council which are not on the posted agenda. Public criticism of the city council, commissions, boards, and agencies will not be prohibited. However, no action shall be taken. Would anybody like to speak on anything not on the agenda? If you could step up, state your name and...
Thanks, Mark Herbert. I'd like to start by something that was really apparent in the Fourth of July parade. There was not only a Confederate flag that was flown in our parade, but there were militia flags walked through the parade as well. That was disconcerting and disrespectful. Concerning the city's deficit budget, I noticed that the insurance rate was an estimated increase of 45 percent. I now wonder if that might not be reflected by the replacement of the complete grandstands and the rodeo grounds, as well as a city employee impacting a private vehicle resulting in a fatality at the intersection of Commercial and Main, and of police officers' ill actions. What I came to suggest this evening was this: In these chambers, former Mayor Bruce Burton, vilified citizens, myself here speaking, involved with cannabis diminishing our capacity as residents. He suggested that we move somewhere else. You can read that in minutes. The city of Willets waited more than 10 years after California legislature passed a medical cannabis regulation to approach any regulation of cannabis in any form. And it was adult use regulations that brought so many city county and state regulations to be proposed with overregulation and taxation being key factors limiting growth in a nascent industry resulting in limited revenue collection through poor management. The council that's prior to this crafted regulations guidelines and stipulations for this new industry. At that time, there was an effort by skunk trade management to purchase the former Remco site utilizing that site for a train depot and possible museum. Financial records showed more than $1.5 million in revenue for the skunk trade for a period of two years prior to this plan. The city of Willets, under Mayor Bruce Burton, made decisions that clearly many citizens, including myself, objected to, including further involvement in the ultimate sale of that property to Mr. Burton et al. I've stated in the past and again restated, the potential for liability of the city of Willets as this industry becomes established with any hint of favorable treatment of this parcel to benefit Burton et al. could place us in jeopardy. And in the interest of open government vested by the people, any decision made in private meetings or public meetings made to apply to this parcel should be reviewed. Clearly, the 200-foot designation affects this parcel and no other in the city of Willets which appears as a conflict to this citizen. Confidence in government should be of the highest priority as the people advocate our authority to those we deem best suited to make mindful decisions on our behalf. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak on matters not on the agenda? Okay, going, going, gone. Okay. First item, 3A, notice of public hearing discussion and possible adoption of resolution implementing a water and wastewater rate increase pursuant to the water and wastewater rate study presented in May 2017 to be effective August 1st, 2019.
Yeah, Mayor Council, you to do the financial analysis for the city. According to the risk study back in August 1, 2017, and then this, we need to increase the rate about 4 percent for water and 7 percent for sewer annually for the next five years to keep ongoing maintenance cost. So, last year is the first year we increased, and then this is the second year, so that's why we're back to the council approval. And then, the sewer rate, I want to emphasize, if we don't increase, we'll probably default by the bond, so the increases must have financially in that case because we have a sewer bond and to be complying for keep the bond going and then the increase must have, otherwise we're probably most likely going to be falling on the bond. Yep. And then the water rate, and it's increased from like 98 cents to $48, $48.88 depending on the size of the pipe, and then that will also is for keep on going maintenance and especially deferred maintenance for the water lines and the water facilities. And right now, our backlog is probably way beyond what we think this moment. I know there is a Brook Trail, I did a little bit of research, they are to increase the sewer rate to $900 a year, and it's higher than the Willets because we are like $88.88 a basis annual, and the Brook Trail right now is $900 per annual just on the sewer. So, we're now dramatically increased by compare to the neighbor district. We're just doing what other people's doing to keep ongoing maintenance cost. Any questions?
Well, okay, so 4 percent for water, 7 percent for sewer?
Yeah, that's according to the water and wastewater rate study back in 2017.
And, and it's the sewer that we have the bonds on?
Yeah, sewer, we have the sewer bonds on, yes.
So, remember the presentation basically said if we didn't keep up with those...
Yeah, we'll get to trouble to meet the bond on the case.
And that affects our credit rating too?
Yes.
Okay.
Are we going to vote for both of these on the same ballot? I mean, on the same vote?
I think we're going to do it separate.
I spoke with the mayor about this just before the meeting. I think historically, we've separated them and had separate votes on them. I think if the discussion can be on both of them, and when it becomes time to vote, just take a moment to make a single motion on one and then deal with that and then a vote on the other.
Okay. Madge, go ahead.
I should remember this, but is the annual rate on the sewer treatment, is that with the property taxes? How is that?
The sewer will be on the tax roll, yes. Where I am currently working on right now, yeah. So, tonight's meeting is kind of big factor between what's going to be on people, residents' next year's sewer tax roll, yeah.
So, it's on the property tax rather than a monthly bill?
Right.
Which is water is on?
Yeah, Brook Trail does, you know, on their water bill, like monthly bill, but we do on the property tax.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yeah. I was looking for some additional information on last year when we addressed this. I understand that we had a recommendation, but I do recall us having some sort of conversation about this was the highest of what we could approve, but we didn't necessarily have to approve that, and what were some things that we could do to ensure that we didn't increase at the maximum amount each year? And so, wasn't the maximum amount, the 4 and the 7 percent, but that the council could always approve less than the 4 or the 7 percent?
Well, what I understand, that's recommended, the increase. I'm not sure that's a maximum we can increase. I think that's a recommended increase rate, just to keep on going the cost.
So, could I get some clarification on what we put in?
So, I can't, I can't say that you can, as a council, do anything you'd like. You can vote not to do increases, whatnot. What we are giving you is a number that it requires to maintain our services. And so, if you want to not maintain our services, you can do that, but that is your decision. But that is what is recommended so that we stay stable, and that's why we recommend that the amount we did.
Stephanie, in light of maybe what you're getting at is they gave us this range, and I think what they said is it incrementally go up, or you could raise it all in year one, is that correct?
Yeah, and this is incremental.
As opposed to...
We are looking at incremental changes every year rather than any sudden change.
Supremity, you were still, you still on the floor if you wanted to ask?
Yeah, so, I'm still a little confused. I'm looking for some clarification on the study that was done. There was a recommended rate, and then there was a maximum rate that we posted that we would approve. And I'm wondering, what was, what were the numbers for each set that's important to...
This, I, from what I understand, this is a proposed rate for recommended rate for each year, for each, the next five years. They did things 17, 18, 19, 20, and 21, so they hold this schedule around, yes, on that one. That was back then. So, that was, I guess at that point in time, you can increase one time for a big jump, or you can spread it in five years.
And so, this is the spreading of the five years?
This is the spread in five years.
And if I remember right, we might have had wiggle room with water, but that sewer, we were kind of advised by the folks that in order to meet our debtless...
I do recall that on the sewer end, but I do remember us having extensive conversations about the water side of things and what percentage we could raise. And I remember us talking about what would be the possibility of not increasing the rates, 4 percent every year, what would we need to do? Did we need to, you know, was 4 percent a number that we needed every year, or should we do 7 percent the first year, 2 percent later? Like, there was an extensive conversation. I'm just wondering, I know you weren't here...
Oh, yeah.
But maybe other council members can recall some of that conversation.
Again, I just remember that we had no wiggle room with sewer, that water we would basically, I guess, have to look for staff. I guess, Greta, you were next, so I'm going to give you an opportunity.
Well, I'm curious about this question.
Okay, ma'am. Well, and I guess Scott, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I'm going to put you on the spot. I guess I'm kind of with sewer that I got to do it, and that has to do with meeting our debt obligations, but with water, I mean, the projects you have in mind, if we said we're making it three and not four, or we do four this year, but next year we want less, I mean, what are we, what are we sacrificing, what are we not?
So, that, that's based off, these rates were based off our CIP for the next five years. I think you've all seen that, you improved it in the budget.
Can you explain what CIP is?
Capital Improvement Project. So, in the infrastructure, water line upgrades, new line upgrades, any, any infrastructure that needs to be repaired or replaced. And that's, so we foresee five years out, and things will change, but we have an amount set at our target, what we're trying to get as our target, is to complete these projects in the five years. And that's what they base their, their rates on.
And so, we're still replacing water lines, we're still, I mean, none of this is gravy, right? It's...
No, it takes time.
And isn't this taken into account quite a bit of deferred maintenance because of the failure to raise rates in the past?
Very true. That's why we had such a big jump in the rates, because they, they said, wow, you guys are behind. I know the fire connection fees went through the roof, and I think you heard about those, I think we all did, but that was the big shocker. It was that one big jump, that they said that to sustain your future, yeah, this is what we're...
Now, how do those go up this time around?
What's that?
The fire connection fees.
What are they going to go to? Fire, yeah, fire.
What's that, is dollars?
Yeah, it goes up $3.
Five.
Oh, sorry, five.
200.2 to 200.7.
Four inch will go up five, six inch will go up 10, eight will go up 15.
Scott, I got Larry wants to ask.
I only remember us not raising the rate one time in the years that I've been on the council. And if I'm wrong, then I don't remember right, but Bruce and I, and I don't remember who else, one year didn't vote for it, and so that's the only time I can ever remember. And it was another person, I don't know who it was, maybe it was Victor or somebody. But that was the only year I remember that we didn't raise the rates, but I could be wrong, because I don't remember really.
After 2021, will the rates stabilize and we won't see continued increases?
Every five years, you're required to do a Prop 218 study, see where you're at.
And then I also want to mention, and then one of our facility, you know, water treatment plants, and then they are in the flood zone, and then insurance, and just by insurance those properties, you know, went up. So, it's not just for maintaining the facility, also we're talking about insurance, you know, other type of, you know, the maintenance costs that we're absolutely have to have, like insurance or scare the promise. All those are went up by Rainbow, so that's another, I think it was $40,000 up or something. It was, it was, it went up.
Yeah, we learned today that flood insurance has gone up, and that's basically our most affected properties are water and sewer. Went up by $25,000 approximately this year, and that's with a large deductible. It was unexpected. It was a very bad year for property insurance in general. We have increased our deductible from $10,000 deductible to $100,000 deductible for property insurance, and it still went up by over $100,000. We, actually, we're getting us, even with changing that deductible, and I was going to actually talk about that in City Manager Reports. We now, wildfire insurance is now separated from property insurance, and we have now, instead of a $10,000 deductible, we have a $500,000 deductible for wildfire insurance. And despite the raises in deductibles, we still have experienced between, most jurisdictions have between a 40 and a 70 percent increase in all insurance rates, and a large portion of that for this city happens to be for water and sewer plants. And so, insurance has taken a very large hit for us, particularly this year. It's been, I had an hour and a half meeting today with Remef, and it was just horrific. And I, and we don't, to crawl our way out of the rate increases, the only thing we can do is raise deductibles. And so, the deductibles have just increased dramatically, and it's just shocking. But everybody's in the same boat, and especially, they've hit us really hard on flood, so we're poring over everything to see what we can sort of skimp on, but it's really, it's the insurance is really killing us.
I met with the city manager, was it yesterday? And I met with Scott this morning and discussed my concerns about our water in general. Besides the lack of the turn lane on Main Street downtown, water is the biggest complaint I hear from residents of Willets. People are dissatisfied with what they perceive as excessive brown days or excessive chlorinated days. When I talk to Scott, when I visit the water plant, I walk away with a different reaction than I do when I talk to citizens who are concerned about brown water and chlorine. We've made incredible strides in how we treat water at the city water plant. I don't think we've done a good job of publicizing that, of getting that word out to the community of what improvements have been made over a relatively short amount of time. So, after having those conversations, I feel less grudging about increasing the amount that we pay in order to provide a quality product that we all use, that we drink, that we cook with, that is essential to life. It's the most essential thing that the city offers us as residents. But I do think that we have to do a better job of communicating to the public the value of what we're getting when we turn on our taps. And you and I had this conversation this morning, and I think you heard my point and you have information that you can give to the public to maybe reassure them and to let them see the value that they're getting even if we increase rates.
And on that note, just real quick, we do an annual consumer confidence report that's available on, on our city website, as well as in the lobby here, that, that shows our progress in the last year. I can tell you that the, the city has had a violation since 2015, and that was with the disinfectioning products. I think something you remember when the state came up and spoke to everybody, including the community. So, just wanted to point that out.
How does our water compare with our surrounding communities?
According to a kid at the Science Fair project, we're number one.
Well...
No, it's, it's a good poll. We have dropped our numbers tremendously. Just for example, our chlorine dose, when we would dose at the plant, the old plant, we were dosing at a four milligrams per liter to achieve a one milligram per liter to leave the plant to sustain our residual in the system. We've cut that down to a two, we've cut it in half, so we're obviously removing more organic material, like 50 percent more. So, and the turbidity levels have dropped tremendously. I mean, our, our level is a .239 is the trigger level.
Can you explain turbidity for folks?
Turbidity is...
Brown water.
Brown water, there you go.
Thanks.
Particles in the water suspended, those suspended solids. Our limit is .239, and we are down in the .01, .02s when we leave the plant. So, I can also say that in the old plant, we would backwash probably every six to eight hours. We'd get a filter run of the backwash six to eight hours. We're now up to 72 hours per filter. So, I can tell you that it's not overloading, and we're getting those full runs. We're doing 1.8 million gallons in the filter run, where we're doing 3,000.
So, actually, Madge and then Larry then.
Well, I just wanted to also comment that in our budget information, we know that we're actually running a deficit in the water and sewage treatment plant. Those are supposed to be self-sustaining funds, those are supposed to be paying for themselves from the user fees, and for the last several years, we have been pretty seriously in the red. And the point of having these graduated increases over several years is to get us back to at least breaking even, because we're not allowed to charge any more than paying our costs out, but we have in fact been running in the red. So, we're gradually trying to close that gap, and I, I don't think we can not approve these rates to try to at least keep up with the maintenance and the CIP projects that we have and the quality that we expect to deliver. But I do think we can do a better job of providing this information to the public.
Absolutely right.
Larry?
The thing like that I have said, and I talked to Scott also today, is that I probably get asked at least a couple of times a week about the color of the water, and especially if I'm in the community and I'm in the water lane at Safeway, which is grown, by the way, from every year, and people are tired of it. I mean, they're, they don't understand, and you can print all the things you want to print in the paper and talk everything you want, when they turn on the tap and it's brown, that, they don't care. I mean, after that, that's it. And so, we have to come up with some type of thing to filter out those kinds of things, and especially if we keep increasing the rate, I'm going to really get it maybe four times a week when I go to Safeway. I'm going to go at midnight instead of at nine o'clock in the morning. And, I mean, people, people are really tired of it, and I can't stress that enough to the staff, that they don't care what it is at the plant or what it is, when they turn on the tap and it's brown, that's it today. And so, we really have to work, and especially if we raise the rates on the water, we're going to really have to do something, or I'm going to have to shop out of town.
So, I thought about this a lot, because when I toured the water treatment plant, the water's beautiful up there, it's pristine. And yet, why is it that we have brown water days? And so, Scott and I were talking about that, and we talked about the iron that settles out in the pipes and goes to the lowest point, and then whenever you have any, it's a pressurized system, anytime you have any disruption, whether you're tapping in a new line, whether someone runs into a fire hydrant, whether you're replacing a section, doing a repair, it stirs things up, and it takes a while for that to settle out. So, I asked him, this is an old town, we have sections of pipe that are very old, that's the big project that started today over on Pine and Spruce and Maple, replacing one of the oldest sections of pipe in our city. How can we prioritize replacing more of that so we get rid of those old pipes and improve the situation? Because we know the water is good coming out of the plant, why is it getting crummy more often than we would like by the time it gets to our taps? And what about all the people who have old houses? Dusty has mentioned multiple times in meetings that we have very old housing stock in our community. We probably, most of us have old pipes in our houses. Is there any kind of federal or state program to help us find funding to help homeowners replace those old pipes and to help the city prioritize replacing our oldest sections so that we can solve this problem, or at least make further headway on it and let the public know that this matters, that we are working on it?
I don't know whether, so, I know that we are prioritizing replacing pipe, old home lines. As for if there are loan programs for homeowners, I do not know. It's certainly something we can look at.
Any other questions up here before I open?
I'm not sure if you have this information, but this study was done in 2017, and since then, a new industry has come about in Willets, and I'm wondering about the impacts of that industry, positive, negative demands on the pipes themselves to the amount of water. I know that when we did the study, we talked about how the city had surplus of water, and so it wasn't an issue. I'm just wondering today, two years later, and I know it will change over time, but where are we at in terms of some side, some terms of analysis?
Of what the impacts have done? So, I can say for three entities still, it's really the first one that has really, they, I asked them to project approximately what they would use. They're using about 30 units a month, which was 748 gallons, 700 gallons is a unit. So, they're using over, a little over a unit a day. They have an extensive recycle, I think Dusty's well aware of that as well, but it hasn't, it's less than they, they thought they would use.
So, so we only have one facility that is currently using water, or that's just an example?
Yes, no, for the, as far as I know, for cultivation.
Okay.
And that's the one I tracked, that was the first one.
So, minimal...
And I can look into...
Minimal impact at this point, okay.
Yes, yeah. I can tell you that the, the school districts, they're using approximately 500 units a month in irrigation. So, just to put it in perspective, hospital uses that much in irrigation, so that's very minimal. An average household in Willets uses about six units a month, 4,500 gallons.
And they're using 30 a month?
Yeah. And it, and it may change, but I know they put in a serious recycle system, they try to reuse every drop, so it's saving them money, saving the, the usage as well.
Okay, thank you.
Just a thought on the fact that some places are using drinking water for irrigation, it makes me wonder if there is some way they could use recycled water or something to to cut back on the quantity of our pure drinking water that is getting used just to water our grass.
That would be, that'd be great.
Yeah, I think that you're a...
Kukaya has actually got a program.
Yeah, there, there are things available, and it seems like it would pay for itself, but it's a private investment for, it's not a city investment, because we're not doing that.
And then right now, recycled water we have pretty much is allocated for our wastewater plant for irrigation, pasture lands. It's been in a lease for a long time, so pretty much all that water we store in ponds for the summer is used to irrigate those fields.
Doesn't PACE offer loans and things like that that are paid out of your property tax and your savings? I don't know, I mean, I just think it's worth looking at.
Yeah. I agree, I mean, I think you guys recall when Mr. Gilmore from the Log Tech came up here, and he was using quite a bit of city water, pretty high water bill a month, and I think he finally ended up doing a well, because he needed like 20 gallons a minute. So, it worked out, and I think they're on the well system now, having her back program, so I'm assuming.
All right, I think at this point, I'm going to open up the public hearing for both the water and wastewater rate increase. So, if anybody from the public would like to come forward, please state your...
I have a quick question.
Why don't you come on up, state your name and...
Mark Herbert. Are there any alternatives to using chlorine to cleanse public waterways, given that chlorine is a neurotoxin?
There are, there are a bunch of ways, it's very expensive. Chlorine is the cheapest route, plus if you do ozone ultraviolet, you need to carry residual to your system, and that doesn't carry that. So, you'd have to add it after the actual disinfection to carry residual in the system.
And to correct his point about infrastructure in private homes, I know that in plant, in programs, they're doing that in houses. There are agencies, federal agencies, they'll come to your house, they literally pull out all the pipe, pull out the skirt, and boom, yeah, makes a lot of sense. And there are approvals, I think that would help. So, if a person doesn't turn the tap on, and it's actually happening in your house, and they want to kick the ball down the street. Thanks for your good... Thanks for your good work.
All right. Anybody else that would like to come up and speak? Okay, last chance. I'll bring it back up here.
I'll make a motion that we approve the changes, the proposed staff-
I think we're going to need two separate motions.
Yeah, for, for the water treatment, for the water bills. No, water, water came first in the staff report.
Okay.
So I'm moving that one.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
So what are we voting on this time?
Water.
Just the water. Got it.
All right. And I'll just first add that I, I live in town. I pay the water fees. Everybody else pays. I experienced the brown water and honestly, as an ex-cop, I can tell you that I usually kind of sit there and curse that somebody hit a fire hydrant somewhere. And I usually can just drive down the street and figure out where that fire hydrant was. I mean, we all. So please, public, stop hitting our fire hydrants. That's part of it. Did you want to add something?
In lieu of what Jerry just said, I have the, the monthly groundwater calls that we receive, official ones that the city tracks and we report to the state. So January, February, we had zero groundwater calls. March, we had three and it was due to a broken fire hydrant that was hit. April, May, we had zero. June, the Davis Creek tie-in out there in the valley, we had five from that. It disturbed a little town. And we knew that was going to happen and we sent out letters for that prior to that. July, we had zero complaints. And then in this month, August, to date, we've had nine. And I think you all know that that hydrant that got hit, the old West End in the heart of town, was about thirty-five hundred gallons a minute and about thirty-five feet high. So that's, that's scooting water. Nothing's going to stay settled on that. So I just wanted to give you-
Thank you, Scott. The other thing I want to say is that I, I seem to remember, Larry, there were a couple of years where there was no increase. Then there was a big one and I, I can't tell you what specific years. So I, I don't like not getting an increase and then all of a sudden I get a huge increase because that seems to hurt me more than if I kind of take the baby steps. That's me. I mean, I don't know how everybody, if everybody likes to take their, their medication all at once or likes to break it up. So that's just my, anybody else like to say anything before we go for the vote?
I think it's obvious what we have to do because we can't kick the can down the road. I'm just frustrated that this council is in a position where we're having to tell the, tell the public that we're going to increase your rates because we've been deficit spending for, for so long. And it's necessary. Obviously, we've got to do it. We've got to have good infrastructure. Otherwise, we're not going to have quality water and we can't run deficit spending. But it doesn't, it doesn't feel good. And like the rest of you, I am from the public. I know how this impacts households like mine, people who are renting. I know that their rental rates go up because the property owner has to increase the rate. So it's impactful, our decision. I know what I need to do, but I'm not thrilled about it.
All right. So we are voting on a increase for water and the appropriate resolution.
Yes.
Let's call for the vote.
Councilwoman.
Yes.
Marjorie.
Yes.
Strong.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Megan.
Yes. All right, now we-
Wait a minute. I want something done about the brown water though because I don't want to have, come back there next year and play the same game. Or in five years or in two years. I'm going to be on only four, so that's up to you guys. So from then on. It's, it's got to, we got to fix it somehow. Thank you.
I just also had to comment that as far as, especially renters, when you're talking, it's a dollar a month that we're talking about increasing right now for the normal residential user. And, you know, so if your landlord comes and says we're going to raise your rent by fifty dollars because of the water bill, they are pulling a fast one on you. It's only a dollar a month. So it's-
What, what's the actual cost after five years though? What will the bill look like?
At the end of twenty-
It sounds like a seventy-six dollar increase.
At, at twenty-twenty-one compared to twenty-eighteen, it would be a three dollar increase per month.
Okay, thank you.
But for next year, it's only a dollar.
One, one final comment. Larry, I, I hear your frustration. I feel your frustration. But I will also want to just repeat something that Scott said. He gave us the incidents of why we had brown water. And in the city's defense, how many, how many of those incidents were related to somebody hitting a fire hydrant that was no fault of the city's? So to ask the city to do something more isn't, isn't necessarily reasonable because they can't control if somebody's going to hit a fire hydrant.
But, but they can make, in my estimation, and I'm certainly not as smart as Scott and all the people in there, there's got to be some way to take each zone and clarify it from the start. I mean, if, if something happens on, where we connected back to the, from the old bridge to the new bridge, and if it's throughout the town, there's got to be a way to isolate it to a certain area and then work on that and then go on from there. I mean, the thing about it is if anything happens, I think is what my frustration is, is that it's not only here and here and here, it's all over everywhere. And-
So that's, okay, so I get where you're coming from. Scott, is it possible in situations like the fire hydrant or the creek for us to isolate? And if it was possible, what could we be doing to, to create that situation?
In that condition, there's nothing you can do. It's the residual in the pipe. When you have velocity, I get the analogy I use. It's, it's like a clear mud puddle, right? And guess what? You jump in it. It's brown. Probably total suspended solids. If you continue to use it, it's going to pull it down the line. It's going to pull it off into the, the branches of the rest of the city. I, I tell, I went to the hotels, told them, do not use your white linens. You're going to have stains. Right after that was hit. They were able to do them that evening. So if you let it settle for a little while and not use it, I know some people say flush it. It's an isolated area. You could. But in a big, in a big break like that, thirty-five hundred gallons a minute plus-
That was the main, right? Is that why?
Yeah. And it's right in the middle of town. Plus, the city of Willets is so flat. Anything, we, we get disturbed anywhere. And we used to get them from trucks filling up with the fire hydrant down there on, on the museum. So in that, now we have two construction meters, one at Castile that we fill up on a hydrant and one in front of the fire department. So we keep it in a consistent manner.
So Larry, we had talked before, I think a year or two ago about this. And we were talking about how if we had an alternative well, what if the water came from there? Is that something that's feasible in that type of situation or only in other situations?
So that's the other issue. When we turn on the well, that causes other brown water issues because it's reversing the natural flow of what it's supposed to be, what it's used to. So when you have a velocity, when everything's used to go into there and then you have a velocity change and everything comes back this way, you're going to stir it up.
But you have water and the, there was a fire or something like that.
Yes.
People, I guess that's, that's the problem that we have. Now, will you replace water pipes? I know that we have the old iron pipes in the ground in some parts of town, but I noticed the new ones are these green plastic ones. Is that?
They're blue. Yeah, C nine hundred.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
And that's the new standard, right? So that-
You can use that reductal iron. In certain situations, we'll use ductile. It's more for, like if you have a soil that's aggressive, you want to go with the, the plastic and, and the ductile lasts years too.
And how long do they last, you said?
The-
The pipes?
Well, I think Larry and I were talking, I bet you that steel pipe that's getting replaced on, on Pine and Spruce now has been in there sixty-plus years.
And its replacement, you would expect to last-
Oh, long, long time.
So long after we're all gone?
If that steel's, that's, if that steel pipes lasted that long in an, in an aggressive water or soil that is going to eat it up, plastic's not going to have that effect. I can tell you that the water pipe that's out there now is about maybe a three to two inches thick and the C nine hundred is a good three quarters inch.
So if we took out the, the fire hydrant incident and we took out the, the work that was done to the creek, would the only other times that we should typically have brown water be related to the flushing of the system?
Yes.
So those, how many times do we typically flush the system each year?
One time.
So typically, we should only see once a year of brown water?
Well, no, because it doesn't, it takes a couple of months to get through the whole town. That's part of the problem.
So it could do different streets on different times?
Yes. And that's why we have the flushing hotline. So if you call that, four five nine seventy-one oh four.
I didn't understand that, which I think is important.
Yeah, we can only do it in so many areas because a lot of times your tanks will go down, you know?
Okay.
And then you got to catch up. It might be a day or two before you can get back to it.
Okay.
All right. I want to move it on to the wastewater. Do I have a motion on the wastewater?
I will move the staff recommendation on the wastewater increases. Please.
Do I have a second?
Yes, I'll second.
Larry will second. Any further discussion? Any comment from the public again? All right. Bring it back up here. Kathy?
Councilwoman.
Yes.
Marjorie.
Yes, strong.
Yes.
Chan.
Yes.
Megan.
Yes. All right. This was, kind of leaves a bad taste in your mouth, but it's the way you run a business. Sometimes you got to raise rates and it's kind of like Larry says, I guess we'll ditch out a Safeway for the next couple of days. So, all right.
City water. Out of the town. Right out of the town.
In my recycled cup, city water.
Presentation by Gary Martin regarding a proposed sculpture for Snyder Park. Gary, you're up.
Thank you. Last month, when I spoke here before, we talked about art in public spaces and how it plays a distinguishing role in our country's history and culture. How it reflects and reveals our society and enhances meaning in our civic spaces and adds uniqueness to our communities. Public art humanizes the built environment. It provides an intersection between past, present and future, between disciplines and ideals. Public art matters because our community gain cultural, social and economic value through art. Today, I'd like to present to you Paul Reiber. I sent up a couple of pictures of his other work, Paul. And Paul is proposing a sixteen-foot redwood pole with bodies on top of bodies. You see the sculpture here and that's the, this is what we call the mecat. It would actually be a redwood pole, which would last forever. And the, that scale there, the model, gives you an idea of how tall it is. Sixteen feet.
The wooden person is a person? The height of a person?
The height of a person, right.
Okay. Thank you.
So we're talking about sixteen feet here.
Okay.
Questions?
Do you have more to your presentation?
Not a lot. Actually, I, well, I did have a lot more, but I, I wasn't permitted to use it. So.
What are, what are you asking of us?
I'm asking you for permission to put this here in the park across the street, to actually do this in the park across the street. We're looking at a two-year project here. You know, first of all, it's a fundraising. The fundraising is what's going to do it. That's, you know, that's what's going to take time. So, but Mr. Reiber is willing to wait. And, you know, it's a matter of saying, of whether we can do, put this sculpture in the park or not. And I'm asking what role is center for the arts. I mean, we're the ones that are heading this up. So anyway, I, and I did pass out some examples so you can see what else the man does and you can see the quality of his work. Yes, Larry?
Where is this going to go?
In the park. We don't know. I, I, in the park. It would be probably off to the left center. If we're, you're looking at the park there, it would be off to the left center.
But there's no particular spot that it's designated to go?
The artist will, he'll, he'll have to choose the spot, the exact spot.
Yeah. So in our staff report, there were a few questions that I think we should probably be addressing. And what I gather that you're proposing is that you have already gone through selecting a sculptor whose work you, you admire and who you think would, would be a project. So it's not like a-
No.
A contest or anything?
I looked through five people and there is one that lives here right here in Willets, but all they do are bears. You know, and I don't think that, what has Willets got in relation to a bear?
We have bears here.
We do have bears here.
We have a lot of bears.
Do you say hang out at the dump?
So-
Bear what you want.
I like bears.
I like bears too, but it's, I think we're, you know, for a city like Willets, you know, we need something a little more sophisticated. I think in bears. If that's what, if we're trying to go with art, if we're trying to do an art thing here in Willets, you know, I think we have to extend our vision a little bit.
So anyway, but my, you know, the first two points I think are that the art center has done the vetting of potential artists and has selected a proposal that you are recommending to us, city council. And so we're not, if we accept this, we're assuming that, that they came up with this great idea and they found the right people and, and we're supporting that. So I think the first two points would be, you know, implicit in our okaying this would be that you have done that.
Yes.
We're not opening it up to a new process. The practical constraints as far as making sure that it is safe, that's obviously something that we would, would want to-
That's been discussed already.
Sure. But, but again, that's in the implementation-
Right.
Phase of it. And I feel like that the city staff would need to review that. So personally, I think that, that Willets needs more art and we have wonderful artists and we should not, you know, complicate it by throwing a lot of obstacles in the way. And that when somebody comes forward with a good proposal, I'm inclined to say, let's get behind it and go for it. My, my personal approach on this is that-
Thank you. Any other questions?
I have a comment. I love art and I would like to see more art integrated throughout our city. But I feel that if we are directing something on city property, it should have buy-in from the entire community. And it shouldn't be something that is selected behind closed doors without public input. And I feel that what you're presenting to us, while it, I have no doubt would be a beautiful item, it really needs to have public buy-in on city property. If you were doing this at Willets, at a, at a private organization, no problem, absolutely. But on city property, which is owned and paid for by the public, it should have public vetting. That's my opinion.
I kind of agree. Speaker, do you want to?
Sure. I think we need more public art and I appreciate that you came here with a proposal for a project. For me, Gary, I want to say, yes, I support public art. But as a council, we need to define a process for submitting. I think we're one step behind you in that we haven't set up any way. So you come here and I love this art and maybe we get the community to look at it too. But what if the next person comes to us next week and they have something that's hideous? So I think the council needs to come up with some kind of systematic way.
Well, you're asking what if people don't like it?
Well, I'm asking, how do we decide? Do we have somebody come to every council meeting with a separate piece of art? Or maybe a product of today's discussion should be about whether we value art in this community enough that maybe the mayor puts together potentially a committee that works with the art center to approve art and come up with some guidelines for art in our community? So that we can get projects like these, yours and others moving along. I don't mean to stop.
Moving art, we learn about ourselves. That's what happens. In comparing views on art, we learn about one another. Disputing art is how we shape culture. That is how we do it, by disputing it. Where there's no argument, there can really be no meaningful art. You know, you do want, not everyone is going to like anything you do. You know, you're going to have half the city that's in, you're going to have the other half who says, what a waste of money. You know, I don't feel there's any, there's any waste there. I mean, art is a beacon. It's, it's a light. It goes on forever.
But Gary, I think it's great to put it, it's in a, it's on a public space and, and again, I got to-
How do we get public approval? What do I do?
And I guess my thing is that I'm not an art critic. I'll tell you, I kind of like your bunnies better than this, but that's just me. I'm a bunny fan. But what does bunny, what do bunnies have to do with the city of Willets? I can't even argue. I, I guess that's my thing is that I, I guess if I'm going to be haranguing for the brown water and the people climbing on each other at the store, I kind of want to, I want people to say, hey, we give you an opportunity, not we vote- "Hey, we gave you an opportunity, not we voted on it today and said, 'Go for it.'" I mean, I guess I like Suprema's idea of some sort of... At least to get the word out, because we gotta, we gotta at least not pay lip service to the public. We gotta show them, "Hey, look, this is being proposed."
Right.
"What do you think?" "It's on the website. It's on this... We're thinking of doing something like this." It wouldn't... It's not gonna cost the city taxpayers any money because they're gonna fundraise, and there are a couple of spots in the park. What are your thoughts? And if the paper runs... The papers run a story on it, then, you know...
All right, that's where we'll start, then, or go to that next.
So, I mean, that's just my thought, so...
Yeah, this whole thing's just snowballed on me. You know, I got artists coming over to check out those two trees and see if we could do something with them, and we can't, they're rotted out, so they won't last. And Mr. Reiber is the one that came up with this idea, and I thought it was a fabulous idea, but I did, I interviewed five different people.
And I appreciate the work you've put into it, because, I mean, you know, I kinda want people to step forward, so I don't wanna go, "Eh." I just, because it is out there, I honestly... It's kinda like the trashcans that were being painted. You know, we had the one painted first. We actually got a lot of positive feedback when folks did that, and I had a lot of people say, "Hey, that's really..." Honestly, I think the first comment I got was, "Hey, the Partridge Family trashcan looks really cool." And I'm like, "Wow, that's really cool." So I was able to come back and say, "Yeah, I support that," because it was kind of a neat thing. But again, I'll be the first to tell you, my son's an artist, but I'm not, so...
Well, I'm an art historian. I'm not an artist, but Paul is, like I said, and this is a wonderful, wonderful sculpture. I know that everybody here doesn't like it even, aware of it, but...
I like it.
I wanna just, not saying anything about the sculpture itself, but as a... Just from a staff perspective, the other things that we need to talk about are the engineering it would take to permanently fix it in the park, and the cost of that is of concern to me from a practical standpoint. Perhaps this particular shape of object is something that you would... That would require long-term maintenance to keep it upright. I have some concerns about people defacing it because it is made of wood, and what kind of fencing would be around it to keep people from doing that. These are just sort of practical things that I wanna make sure that people understand. When something's made of wood, people like to carve on it. That's why most public art... A lot of public art is made of stone or surfaces that are metal.
Bronze.
Or bronze, that are less susceptible to public defacement. Or to people climbing on it or things like that. So these are all sort of the little, the practical aspects that are apart from the artistic aspect that I sort of have to bring up as my point.
Okay, any other questions?
I just wanted to say that when the council, prior to me getting here, set priorities, increasing art and culture in Willets was one of them, and I certainly agree with that as a priority. So we are not, I don't think any of us, poohing the idea of moving forward with sculpture in Willets, but there are practical aspects that need to be taken into consideration, and I think we've addressed all of them.
So you're gonna form... Let me get this straight. You're gonna form a committee to...
Well, not quite there yet. We gotta finish our discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's a suggestion, but the mayor actually is the one who...
But I... In the meantime, no matter what we do up here today, I mean, if this is what you're...
Proposing.
Thank you, proposing, then the more it gets out there in the community so that we can get some feedback.
Okay.
Like I tell you, the... I call it the Partridge Family trashcan.
Yeah.
Got a lot of favorable reviews.
Yeah.
And that, honestly, when people say, "Why are people painting?" I go, "Hey, look, go check it out. It actually looks better than it was there before."
Yes.
I get... Hate to say it, but it gave us kind of that political cover to say, "Yeah, it looks good, and, you know, you guys like it."
All right, good. All right, well, I'll start promoting it. I'm sorry.
Well, I wanna make sure we have... That we hear from anybody in the public today, but also I think if we postpone, you know, we kinda keep this on our agenda in the near future, get some publicity about it, that we hear from the public. It could be a committee, or it could just be at City Council, but I think it's totally appropriate, given that it is a city-owned park, that the City Council does our best to represent what we think is the public's best interest. There's no way to, like, have a vote of the whole public. So, you know, so keeping this process open for a while and hearing from the public, I should just, you know, warn us all that people tend to be very vocal with criticisms more than they are with support, so...
Well, in our...
You're more likely to hear from people who, "I don't know."
In our survey, we did an art survey, and seventy-three percent of the people find art essential in Willets.
Yes.
So essential. I mean, it was essential somewhat and something...
But everybody's a critic. I'm just saying that...
Everybody's... Everyone should be a critic.
We will hear feedback, you know, pro and con, I'm sure.
Right.
But I think it is appropriate that that... That the City Council can make that decision, not tonight, but in the near future with public input on it as to how we want to have our, in our public park.
Great.
Suprema, you?
One more question. Stephanie, I have a question for you. If we were to form a committee, what types of professional individuals that would need to participate on the committee? Because forming a committee is one thing, but if you don't have the right people on it... So I just wanna have an idea of, like, what sort of commitment might it take from different areas? Like, we've obviously the Art Center, maybe somebody from the council, engineering, I don't know. Could you give me an idea?
Definitely, we would have to hear from Public Works and Engineering, which are really impacted staff organizations right now, to talk about maintenance and how much it would cost erected, how much it would cost to sort of keep it safe, whether those materials would be the best thing. I would wanna hear from our Public Works and Engineering about that. Again, very short-staffed, I would probably want maybe to hire, you know, we have a city engineer who works by the hour. That cost would need to be factored in. We, you know, yeah, so costs would have to be factored in, and somehow those costs would need to be covered. Right now, we have no money in our budget for public art. I know Gary had talked to me about wanting a commitment from the city for financial commitment from the city, so I wasn't sure what that was. And it would be an ongoing commitment, or there would be, have to be some sort of a commitment, an ongoing commitment financially, and so there would be finance requirement, we'd have to be probably in on that too. Because if that were to be get old and wanna fall down, that would be bad. So those are just considerations.
So, Mary, this is kind of an idea I have. I know that Public Works and Engineering is heavily impacted right now with all the work that we're doing. I'd like to make the suggestion that we consider putting a committee together in the winter time after we get through that, and the purpose of the committee would be to discuss what is the, what is the vision and how could we go about citywide, not just on city property, but potentially partnering with private... What is our overall vision for this, but not necessarily specifics from the beginning of a project, but how would we, how would we select projects, setting up a process?
Could I bring it?
I actually, just to build off that, could you give me an idea? I know that we've talked about public art a little bit at Revide Ed. Would you like to refer this to Revide Ed? Just to...
That's a good idea.
Okay, again, it gives us a chance for the public to ruminate over this, and... I mean, Gary, I gotta tell you, I'm not an artist, and my idea of art is I like dogs playing poker.
Yeah, yeah. We could do that.
But probably not appropriate for the park, so... All right, so Revide Ed could pick up the mantle. Dusty, throw it on your list and...
For winter?
Thank you.
If you, I mean, if the folks have any idea, I think that's appropriate. I just...
Rather than I would Revide Ed, I would support that, and I would be willing to participate in either the conversation at Revide Ed or the subcommittee of Revide Ed, like we did at the Sign Committee. Do you support that?
I am frustrated with the lack of movement with the Sign Committee, and I would hate to see this go there and end up in a lack of movement place.
So you'd like to see it separated now?
I would like to see it go somewhere where it's actually gonna be acted upon.
Amen. I like that.
Well, can we table this till November, the first meeting in November to discuss putting together a committee? That way it'll give our chance. I'm a little concerned that as we approach this Aspire season coming up, last year about October, we were running around dealing with things and...
I was thinking of winter.
Winter, winter?
Winter, winter.
Well, I think we can have a discussion the first meeting in November to kind of set the committee.
I agree.
And that way, we're not dragging it out, having the discussion in winter to have the discussion in the spring, so how about we bring it back, the first meeting in November to... Because we only have one meeting anyway usually in November, and we can...
We can talk about it.
Form a committee.
Right.
And in the meantime, Gary, by all means, try and spread the word and...
I will.
And that way, at least, if we get some feedback...
Feedback, right.
Then it works better for me.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Well, and just knowing our budget situation, I'm hoping that part of your proposal going forward is to...
We're talking about it too, right, here.
Is to reduce the amount that the city's monetary impact, but...
Yeah, I'm looking for the city to be invested in this, but it's like I was talking to everybody about it, and so, yeah, we get together then in November, we'll do it again.
Thank you. Oh, thank you. At this point, anybody from the public would like to ask Gary questions or come forward?
Any questions?
Going, going, gone.
Gary, can I take a minute?
Oh, by all means.
Yes, you're popular.
Why don't you come on up so that, you know, folks at home can listen to you? I do love your bunny, though.
My vision for this, what we're... Well, I see this as is a pole that celebrates community. It's people helping each other up. They're all faced into the pole, so what you see is the back of their bodies, so it's not... It's very non-gender race-specific. It's just humans climbing, helping each other up this pole, which that's kind of... That's, that's the image for it. Should be very palatable to the public. You know, the idea behind it, you know?
Has the Art Center brainstormed the idea of doing public art on private property that isn't a public view?
No, we represent the city of Willets at the Art Center. We are the face of Willets. We're one of the faces of Willets. So, no, we really haven't thought about private property doing that. Whose property would we look at, for example?
I can think of many people that would love to partner up with the Art Center to put more art in their places of business.
Oh, okay.
So I'm just saying, don't. Let's think a little broader.
Sure, sure. Yeah, I think it's just important to get started on something.
No, I agree.
Okay, well, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well, November.
Tell you what, Kathy needs a few minutes, so I'm gonna call for a five-minute break? All right. Kathy needs to sit up for the next presentation. Session, item three C, presentation by Aquamet Global regarding a potential hemp biomass extraction facility and aquaponics cannabis growing facility. And Dusty, this is just on for presentation, right?
Correct.
All right.
I'll go ahead and introduce you, if that's okay?
Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Dusty Dooley, your community director. We have some folks that are interested in making a significant development in our community. Specifically, they're interested in establishing a hemp extraction facility as well as multiple cannabis cultivation operations using aquaponics technology. The specific project, or specific property in question is the property located on the north side of Bechtel Road and the east side of Bechtel Creek behind Burger King. It's a nine-acre piece of vacant land that's zoned heavy industrial. This property might be known to the council as the old Scruggie Brothers' property. Did I say that right?
Yes.
We have the property owner, VRX Labs, their representatives are here today, and we also have Mr. Warren Bravo, the CEO of Aquamet Global, here as well, and I know that they're anxious to share some further details on a potential business development that, again, they're interested in establishing in Willets. As it relates to a path forward for them, our zoning code does allow for you to, say, extract essential oils from lavender and other oil, other herbs and flowers. Our zoning code allows you to extract oils from cannabis plant. Our code is silent on hemp extraction. However, the zoning code does allow the opportunity, when a use is not classified in our zoning code, to determine what use, if use group it most closely represents, and then to fit it into that category and then move forward through the permitting process otherwise. So there could be an opportunity to fit this type of development within our cannabis ordinance and run it through that permit process. This happens with other uses. For instance, when I first started working here, someone came in with a business license for a laundromat. Laundromat isn't mentioned anywhere in our use group, so we made a determination that it was similar to other consumer uses and determined that it was allowed in commercial zonings. So this is uncommon that you would go through an exercise like this. Having said that, I'm happy to answer any questions, but what we have in front of you is no request for action, rather to just see a presentation from these folks here.
I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak in front of the Willet City Council, and special thanks to the staff for arranging us on the agenda for this evening. Our team is here to present a business model which will bring further prosperity to the city of Willets, in the creation of jobs, taxes, or tax revenue, disposable income, and major support to local trades and businesses. And let me introduce myself. My name's Warren Bravo. I'm the CEO of Aquamet Global. I'm here with my Director of Business Development, Todd Villarubia, and my CEO, Aaron Schultz, who've come from Louisiana and Georgia to support this presentation. Who are we? We are a group of seasoned business professionals with major experience in construction, legal, accounting, cannabis oil production, and cannabis cultivation using aquaponics as our growing methodology. Our goal is to develop a six-acre parcel of land on Bechtel Road into a world-leading cannabis business park, which will include a four-acre indoor aquaponics cultivation as well as a 50,000-square-foot hemp extraction facility. Now, what is aquaponics? Well, aquaponics, you were talking about water and water used earlier, but aquaponics is a closed-loop, deep-water culture production system for growing vegetables and cannabis. It uses ninety percent less water than traditional forms of agriculture. It's a symbiotic relationship between water, plants, and fish, and this is really important because of its efficient use of water. And we all know water's going to be a scarce resource over the next few decades, and anyone not adopting sustainable methodology in agriculture is going to be a dinosaur extinct soon. Countries like the UK, parts of Africa, some South American countries, and closer to home, Southern California, Texas, Arizona, Florida, they're all gonna have the... Feel the pressure of shrinking water resources in the next, in the next short, near future. In 2012, I founded a company called Green Relief Inc. and became a licensed producer of cannabis in Canada using aquaponics for our cultivation. When I established this company, it was my primary focus to help the world with the medicinal value of CBD and THC, both in cannabis and hemp. There's a lot I can speak about regarding our superior extraction methodology and the fact that we don't use pesticides, fertilizers, or topical treatments on our plants in our indoor-controlled growing environment. Our sensitive ecosystem will not allow the addition of these harmful chemicals as they may affect the fish that we plan to donate to food banks and homeless shelters. Green Relief was founded on our desire to help people. Currently, our proposed use of the extraction facility is to bring high-quality, consistent CBD and THC-based nutraceuticals to the sixth-largest economy in the world, California, and then the rest of the country when the laws permit. But in the meantime, CBD from hemp has shown huge medicinal promise, and I'd like the council to consider our plans... to consider our plans for the approval of building a hemp extraction facility in the city of Willets. I know there are a few concerns with the city bringing in plant material such as hemp, grown in other jurisdictions, we are not growing hemp in the city, into a geographic area where the country's premier cannabis is grown. Cross-pollination is not an issue, is not a concern, and take a second to discuss how we can effectively control this issue and set a new standard for the industry. All hemp will be rinsed and dried and ground, in some cases, prior to leaving the source of the growing operation. The dried biomass will be sealed into plastic drums and shipped in a closed transport truck to our facility. The sealed drums will be offloaded into our biosecure receiving area, which includes habitat filtration, UV sterilization, ozone carbon filtration on all exhausted air from the facility. Dried biomass will be given an alcohol rinse when the plastic drums are emptied, and that will kill any potential pollen, spores, or pathogens. Taking every precaution to ensure the potential of cross-contamination is completely eliminated will be the focus of our production facility, and it's our intent to work closely with the city on policies and procedures to make sure these issues are contained. In closing, the last slide is gonna show some economic benefit to the residents of the city of Willets. And when in full production, our aquaponic cultivation, with our aquaponic cultivation, we will be creating over 150 new jobs for the city of Willets in Mendocino County. This is gonna increase the potential disposable income in excess of $550,000 per month in discretionary spending. By basing our business in Mendocino County, we'll have a positive impact, an increased business tax revenue for the city, as well as regular contributions to the community chest for helping with developments, developments of schools, parks, and infrastructure to help keep the city vibrant for many years to come. The city of Willets in Mendocino County can take pride in their leadership and progressive thought process with helping establish the largest aquaponic growing facility in the world and top-class CBDs oil production. And all of these fall within the city, the existing city of Willets cannabis regulations. Big, high-level overview. Any questions, comments, concerns? Yes, sir.
How much water will you use from our source?
The facility that I have up in Canada that I established, Green Relief, we had a 6,000-square-foot canopy, and I grow one plant per square foot, so 6,000 plants. These facilities are gonna be much larger, they're gonna be 22,500 square feet, because that's the maximum size that the code allows in California to grow. But if you equate my, my growing operation in Canada to a 40-by-20 swimming pool, and in Canada, we have to drain our pools halfway in the winter because of frost, we have to get the water below the jet lines and then fill it up in the spring. So a 20-by-40 pool, if you have one and you have to drain it halfway, use more water than I do in the facility that I have, growing 6,000 plants. So I can't give you an exact total, but I can get back to you on exact total.
Okay. I appreciate that.
No problem.
What brought Willets to your radar? Why Willets?
Our friends at VRX Labs, Charles Beethan, he's got a very high-profile, very, very well-known laboratory, testing laboratory. He had the opportunity, he has already purchased the land, and we will become his tenants, we'll be buying a couple acres to start and leasing other acres. It was an opportunity in a cannabis-friendly area in California. Our desire is to be in the state, and why not Willets?
Any other questions? I was gonna ask them.
I'm trying to understand how you are bringing the hemp here and vacuum sealing it and doing all these other things?
That'll be done at source.
But, but then in the, in the photographs, I see it growing, so...
It's a hemp versus cannabis.
Oh, it's the hemp versus cannabis. So when it comes to-
Yeah, the hemp is gonna be grown out of this region. It's not going to be grown here. It could be coming from Oregon, it could be coming from Southern California, it could be coming from different jurisdictions, but they will be following our policies and procedures, our SOPs, very closely. They'll all be coming in very, in tight sealed drums to our facility. There will not be any potential for cross-pollination of hemp to cannabis during that transportation and, and unloading process and extracting process in our facility.
I think, to address your question, there's really two kind of businesses being proposed here. One is cannabis grow, cultivation via aquaponics.
Correct.
And then the secondary option business being proposed is hemp extraction.
And I'd like to flip that around, I would say the hemp extraction will be our primary focus first on the first two acres, and then as-
Right, originally, your focus was cannabis, now your focus is the hemp extraction, and if this, if the council will approve, will allow the understanding that hemp extraction is resembling cannabis or extraction that we're already allowing within our ordinance, then you would go forward with your extraction portion and ultimately follow that up with the hydroponics cannabis cultivation.
Absolutely correct. Aquaponic, hydroponics uses fertilizers and chemicals, and we know aquaponic is the proper terminology.
Yeah.
So, just to clarify for anybody that isn't already aware of it, cannabis growers are concerned about being contaminated with hemp and their cannabis crops will not be as valuable. So, that's why you want to keep that very separate. Is there some advantage to doing both of those things at this one site?
Both of those things, as far as cannabis and hemp?
Yeah, just as-
Yes, because the, the extraction facility that we're gonna be setting up isn't just limited to cannabis-based products, hemp-based products, I'll be able to extract essential oils or oils from anything. It really isn't limited to any particular thing, but right now, CBDs in hemp are, show a lot of medicinal promise, and we wanna explore that with science, we wanna extract a very high purity. In Canada, I have the highest purity CBD oil in the Canadian marketplace, and I have 55% potency per unit and 95% to 99% purity per batch. Very, very difficult to get that kind of purity, bring that methodology that I learned in Europe, in Switzerland, and produced in Canada, to, to now the United States, who have a very difficult time achieving the purities that we're talking about. Talking of bringing a very high-value, high-end medicinal CBD product from hemp as well as from cannabis.
So there, yeah, so there are economies to doing both kinds of extraction in one-
Correct. It's the same equipment, but there's gonna be procedures that, you know, for doing a hemp run, and then there's gonna be obviously a cleaning and proper procedures to, to change over from one product to another product.
Is there already a fairly big market out there in the world for the hemp CBD extraction?
It's massive, yeah. Yeah, it's huge. It's only gonna get bigger, because right now, it's the, the product, the CBD products, it's just in its infancy now, because, you know, with purity of 95% or above, CBDs will crystallize, you can crystallize CBDs, and now your inputs, now you can grind and powderize a crystal, and now your inputs can go into any dry product, cosmetics, lifestyle products, nutraceuticals, pharmaceuticals, it makes no difference now. It's gonna be, if you equate the CBD market to an ocean, the water's just kinda swelling now, the wave hasn't even started yet. So, we wanna get in here early, we wanna make this a thing, and this is gonna be something that North America, this facility in North America, hasn't seen.
And again, you're proposing medicinal only?
We are not interested in the recreation market, correct?
Okay.
We wanna make medicine and help people.
Okay. And I know, so it seems like the negative connotation with hemp, I've noticed that the county has banned its outdoor grow, et cetera, has got to do, again, with the cross-pollinization, is that correct?
That was my understanding, but, but, and to me, it's not an issue, obviously, you have to be satisfied that it's not an issue, but we will set a standard for hemp production in this state. You will be proud that we are the corporate citizens, good corporate citizens, we are to have us here, because you'll be able to showcase that the way things should be done, bringing our methodologies and our policies from the Canadian legal marketplace to California.
And I'm assuming no genetically-modified items at all?
Correct, correct.
So, I'm gonna-
Quick question. Culminating in the construction of retail location towards the front of the property, what would you be selling in your retail location?
Very, very low priority, if, if at all. We put it in just because, as a businessperson, you'd never say never, but the sale of cannabis recreationally is not on our radar today. But with discussions with the city, if we're gonna put a proposal in to have a full business park and vertical integration of our products, that retail could be just for medical products only.
Okay.
You know what, I'm gonna see if anybody from the public, unless all these folks are with you.
Yeah.
If anybody else would like to speak, by all means, come on up. If you'd like to come up, state your name and-
Members of council, good evening. My name's Charles Beathan. I'm the CEO of VRX Labs. That's a lab, we, one of our sister companies, real estate holding company, acquired the property, that's about 9.5 acres. Councilwoman, you asked, why Willets? And the reason is simply this, it makes absolute business sense for us to do that. Because right now, you have more growers in the Emerald Triangle up here than anywhere else. The testing that's been done at the level that's going to be required is being done in Oakland. That's the only lab that can handle the level of sophistication that a lab like ours has. So we thought, why not choke 'em off? Why not have the most advanced testing lab in the United States for cannabis up here with a lab for our business having about 7,000 square feet of testing? So what we're bringing in, and Warren hasn't talked about their capital investment here, but ours is much smaller than theirs. We, our capital investment, just on infrastructure, is gonna be about $2.5 million. We're gonna bring another set of equipments. In our labs, we use one set of equipment, runs us about $1.3 to $1.5 million. And for each one of those sets of equipment, and we'll probably have about five sets of equipment once we're fully built out, each set of equipment requires about 15 scientists. Those scientists are paid anywhere from $50,000 to $75,000, all here in Willets. All the construction will be happening here. So for us, it makes business sense. You know, as two Canadians from the other side of the country now living in the US, we're bringing some interesting science to this area. So when we're bringing our lab, so right now, we are in the process of opening up two labs in Southern California. The technology we're bringing in, a lot of it's coming from oil and gas, a lot of it's coming from heavy sciences. All of our scientists have at least one advanced degree. We have PhDs working as analysts at our labs. We've turned away people who've applied for our labs. That's the level of science and commitment that we wanna bring to Willets. The reason that we wanted Warren's company to come on board is quite simple. If you go on Google and search what they've done, you're seeing, and the type of technology they use, they use patented technology, they're using a process by which you use 90% less water than any other growing facility, and the product that they're coming up with is going to be unique. As all of you know, last November, Congress took CBD hemp off Schedule I. So, what happened, what that means is they have to, products must be at a level of, and more, correct me if I'm wrong, 99.7% or better. If it's less than that, it could be a federal offense, transported across state lines or anywhere else. So what these guys are doing, it's important for us to be able to verify that quantity, because what you're having is a natural global distribution chain. So how that works is, right now, is this, you're having California, as being the leader, dealing with a lot of countries in South America, Ecuador. From Ecuador, you're having a huge infusion, infusion of money from the United States, from Canada, and from the EU, from Eastern Europe. Why? Because Warren said, the medical application of CBD goes from Central America over to Frankfurt, from Frankfurt over to Barcelona, and that is basically, we expect the EU to take, take all that. We wanna switch that production line to the United States. We wanna switch it, and if you think about it this way, with the level of production that Warren's company is doing, you're going to have not only scientists here, you're gonna have production facilities, you're gonna have logistics, and we believe we're actually going to bring a lot of very skilled, highly-paid people to the city, and we wanna change the face of the city, and hopefully address a lot of problems we've heard about earlier here today. For us, it's ideal, and we're very excited about the prospects. Kind of feeling any questions?
Your testing lab is, you're already bought the property, so you're looking at establishing your testing lab?
Yes, we're looking at breaking ground here. We're, obviously, we wanna be in partnerships with other scientific entities, we hope, to break ground probably in late December or early January. Part of it is going through the process, making sure we have our customers lined up with the different growers, and they have to be large facilities, we don't deal with mom-and-pop shops, as will our strategic partners at the location.
Just wanted to ask, Dusty, given that your interpretation of our existing code is that these are similar to things that are allowed, so they're basically, doesn't require a conditional use permit, it doesn't require an action by city council, it's a staff-level review. Is that right?
Correct. As the Community Development Director, I'm, I'm leaning towards making an interpretation that hemp extraction is, is similar to cannabis extraction, with the exception that we would wanna identify some additional standards, which Warren has, has gone over, as far as ensuring that we don't have cross-pollinization issues. Other than that, I don't see any impacts from hemp extraction that aren't dealt with within our cannabis ordinance. And I also wanted to mention that these activities that are discussed today would be subject to our cannabis tax ordinance as well.
So in other words, it could move ahead relatively expeditiously, because it is allowed in jurisdiction?
Correct. We already have regulations for testing lab, we already have regulations for cannabis production or cultivation, and then with that zoning intervention, the hemp extraction, we would have a path forward for-
Another reason to come to Willets.
And one last, just one last comment, just talking about the level of investment. The total project with the four growing operations and the hemp extraction facility, we're investing $25 million into the local economy.
Thank you.
Our, our Measure I, excise tax ordinance that we passed, it defines cannabis very broadly as any part of a cannabis plant that is used in a business for medicinal purposes, and I think that broad definition would cover hemp use for medicinal purposes.
Thank you very much for the presentation. I guess like I caution all the other cannabis businesses that come in that I've had an opportunity, the better corporate citizen you are, obviously, there's great needs here, we have a volunteer fire department, we have schools, et cetera, and I just kinda put it out there, you want the community to embrace you, embrace the community, and as we move forward with these sort of things, I wanna look at you like I would look at any other corporate citizen coming in here wanting to do business. Thank you.
I appreciate that.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Did you want to say something?
I'd like to speak. My name's Joe Colton, and I'm a resident of that immediate area where the proposed stuff. I wasn't planning to speak tonight, because I really, I'm basically for any job-producing industry in Willets, and I, you know, personally, I benefit from that. I have been walking through Sherwood property, where there is an informal footpath that provides access for the last 35 years. I appreciate the Shraggers being good public citizens and doing, you know, producing straw and having a very pristine piece of property. So I've been benefiting on a regular basis by walking, and many other people have an informal footpath, and people get to camp down the creek, too. So I have a personal interest in being able to access that area. In addition to that, when I do walk through that area, my only other pedestrian access from, you know, downtown back to my house is across a, like a less than four-foot-wide sidewalk next to the highway. I know it's dangerous, because I've been hit while sitting in my parked car there. I know that another person was severely injured by a truck sliding off the road and, and basically severely injuring her. So I know that there are hazards for pedestrians using that area, and that property is like the only alternative access as an informal public footpath. In 2007, the city of Willets put on a show that cost a substantial amount of money, proposing a residential- proposing a residential development in that area. It included public access, where apartments and various green features would be provided in that property. So I think that that certainly should be considered, that loss of public access and the safety issue. But I don't have a business, I don't have any, you know, I'm for business. I live right next to that mill. I'm put up with the various noises and trucks, and I consider that a contribution, you know, to the prosperity of Willis. And I would think that would be great. But I think that certain public access should be considered. Not only that, but there is also a likelihood that there is like serious pollution in that area, where toxic waste was dumped there in the past. And that also should be looked at before this development gets the approval of the council. Well, thank you.
All right. Thank you, everybody. And at this point, we're gonna move on.
So just for clarification, we heard a presentation. And I know that there was something in the statement about what we were, the presentation, that led to the question of whether or not Dusty had the authority to use discretion. And I thought that that was a question before the council, but then I heard that he had felt that he had the discretion. Is that a question before us? I'm trying to understand.
No, there's no, there's no action being requested. This was just for presentation purposes only, but I...
I think when we first got the request to have this presentation, we got it at extremely short notice. And we hadn't quite worked, we hadn't quite understood that question yet and had posed the question to Jim and hadn't quite gotten a response yet. So we sort of left it a little bit open, although we did not anticipate coming to council with the question yet. Since both Dusty and our council looked at it in some detail and realized that the scope of it was such that it was within staff's discretion. I think that that's what came out.
So did you make a legal decision that it was within staff's discretion?
I have, I've talked with Dusty informally about it. And I've looked at the, it's Section 17.06.030 that he summarized earlier that says that each proposed use shall be deemed to fall within the use group which it most closely resembles. And Dusty and I agree that this proposed production facility is virtually the same as producing oils from cannabis plants. And there's no really distinct differences, except that the hemp has extremely low levels of THC. Other than that, they're very, they're very compatible businesses. And so it seems like, it seems to me and to Dusty that the code does allow for us to determine that this proposed use group falls into the same use group as cannabis manufacturing. And Dusty was also telling me that there's a provision within our code that allows him as community development director to exercise discretion and make that determination. And I haven't had a chance yet to see exactly what section that is.
Okay.
So we do not need to make any actions?
We're not, no.
No, we're not asking to make decisions.
And then in our cannabis ordinance, is there anything that addresses, because I don't recall it, anything about a cap on water usage or a standard of water usage? Would this type of cannabis-related business be comparable to what we already approved as a council? I'm just wondering if there is any, any large variances in terms of water usage? I think it's a fair question.
There's, there's no cap on water usage. What the ordinance does request specifically for cultivation operations is that they have a water management plan showing how they're efficiently making use of water. So for instance, with our existing cultivation operation, they're able to show how they reuse the water and that there's essentially until they get to a point where the water has an over-concentration of nutrients, then they have to dispose of that water. But, you know, I think Mr. Herman was up here earlier and mentioned that, you know, they haven't been a significant user of water. But regardless, there isn't a cap on the overall water usage, just...
Because I'm just thinking, should we, having had maybe some future wisdom, should we have built something in that laid out more detail about water usage in relationship to cannabis, whether it's this or something else? I'm just trying to think about, we're discussing water, and now, you know, things are gonna come up that are gonna make the subject of cannabis where there's more gray area. Just throwing the idea out there that maybe we need to think that, about that a little bit more. And then one more thing. If any project was to be put heavy industrial in that particular land, the land that was up for discussion, is there any reason to suspect that heavy industrial would have an impact on the creek that runs through there? And would the city require any property owner to make sure to have a planted, a proactive written plan that shows that there would be no damage to that particular creek?
So certainly, heavy industrial uses definitely have the opportunity to impact water quality and fish habitat within the creek that borders the property. You know, they're not allowed to discharge anything into the creek that would be harmful. They're not allowed to develop in close proximity to the creek where it would be causing erosion issues or otherwise. It may be that when they're going through their construction development plans, that drainage improvements are shown to drain into the creek, at which point they'd be working with fish and wildlife through their permitting process.
So that would be standard for...
Regardless of whether it's a discretionary permit that comes in front of us that would allow us to put special conditions on it, there are protections in place, typically through water quality. As far as the amount of acreage they're disturbing, they may have to get a permit from them. Certainly, when you're moving dirt around, you're working with us through the grading permit process. And then with everything being enclosed, I'm not too concerned specifically about this project. But yeah, that's always a concern.
Just any project in general.
And even when it's not a discretionary project, there are rules in place.
Thank you.
So then, just to follow up on Mr. Colleton's comments, this council does not have the authority to say yes or no to business developments. That falls to our community development director and his department. Is that correct?
Right. So in this instance, where it's not a discretionary project, that's what it's looking like, we simply, if they present a project that meets our applicable standards, then we're gonna approve it. If it doesn't, then they don't get to move forward. But and it's the community development director, I'm in the position to make that initial determination. And with any, in any determination that I, as the community development director, make, that's appealable to the city council. So if someone thought I approved something erroneous and it didn't quite meet the standards, then they can appeal that to the city council. And then you could obviously override my determination if you find it to be in error.
So, Mr. Colleton, I hear your concerns and understand your desire to have open space continue throughout the city. This is not a decision that this council would be able to make. So just for your clarification.
What we will be striving for on this property and working with this group is to meet a long-term goal, which is to actually have a road through this property that would eventually connect with railroad. And so if that happened, we would certainly be looking to create a city-standard road that would have, you know, adequate sidewalk and whatnot, so that we'd be walking path through there.
And again, when, as we work through our trail, through this area, that would be the, I guess, the pedestrian path that we would be looking at. No, 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 no. But, you know, that would be fairly close to this location along the tracks.
As will our new rail with trail project.
So you said you're looking for a public, eventually a public road that would go through this site?
Yeah. The city's long envisioned having another road that connected specifically Bechtel Road with railroads. So we had another north-south connection through town besides Main Street. And I think the council can understand what the city could benefit that would be.
How does that get integrated into the proposed development plan?
Well, as discretionary projects come up, it gives us the ability to make those types of things. As they build out their development, they have to build industrial road standards. And again, well, you know, I've told them about, you know, the city's desire for that. And, you know, hopefully, it'll be, continue to be part of the discussion through the process. But there's only so much that we can, are allowed to ask or gain.
And Dusty, feel free to comment what I'm gonna say, but, Mr. Colleton, government doesn't actually build houses. We really depend on developers, private industry, to move things forward. And we can facilitate some of this, but in the end, you know, there was a concept project that I think you're talking about, proposed a while back. And it's one of those, I'm assuming we got a grant to do that or some sort of funding?
You know, it's before my time. I'm really unfamiliar with the study that he's referring to, but...
And I think that the desire was, this is all we'd like to see. But just because we wanna see it doesn't mean that private industry or private property owners will share our vision. I know that there are forces at work having to do with prior owners of the property trying to shed that property and et cetera, and folks willing to buy it. And that's just how business moves. Somebody has something you want, and they're willing to sell, so we move forward, so.
I just mentioned something. My property is on Bechtel Creek. And I understand that there's easement, the recreation purposes on the creek bank in a certain, you know, so many feet away from the creek. That property has the same kind of situation, same creek under.
All right. Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you for the presentation. All right. And item four, enactment of ordinances, we have none. And consent calendar. We have the following items for approval or denial. Are the city council minutes for July 24?
I so moved.
One second. Okay, motion's second. Any further discussion? Anybody from the public wanna speak on that? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Informational reports, we, feel free to look on our website or building inspection activity reports for July and business license activity. And then right to appeal, persons who are dissatisfied with the decisions of the city council may have a right to a review of that decision by a court. The city has adopted Section 1094.6 of the Code of Civil Procedure, which generally limits to 90 days, the time within which the decisions of the city boards and agencies may be judicially challenged. And commissions and agencies, we meet concurrently as the planning commission and the successor agency, and we have no business there. City manager reports.
Yes, I have a few things. Stephanie Gervant's here, city manager. First item, I wanted to report out that we met with the California Conservation Corps last week. And they wanted to come out, actually, the head of the corps came out and wanted to see the proposed site for their new facility. And they, we went to that and we chatted with them about it. They then gave us a, actually today, or yesterday, they presented me with an architectural, a 3D architectural rendering that I wanted to show council. I wasn't able to go to the packet because we just got it yesterday. Can we have that?
We can.
I thought you'd all like to see what was proposed. It's on East Hill Road, right down from the hospital bit. These are the dormitories that were proposed.
Can you orient us to, what street is that? Is that East Hill?
Yeah, pretty soon you're gonna see the...
The railroad tracks.
There's the railroad tracks, and then you'll see the freeway here. And the original slide actually had a little bullet where it showed what you're actually looking at. Unfortunately, that seems to have disappeared. But there's a recreational facility and an educational facility, which I believe you're looking at here. There's several dormitories. There's a large dormitory. This is actually, I think, the educational facility.
Is this Caltrans property between here and the fest?
I'm not sure. Dusty, can you help with that? Is this Caltrans property?
He comes back around and will tell you.
Oh, okay. Because I remember seeing the little boxes that were very helpful, sort of orienting what it was.
Will this replace the Talmadge CC camp, or is it an addition to?
It's, oh, go ahead.
You go ahead.
My understanding, it was gonna replace it.
That's my understanding.
Yeah, my understanding, it was gonna replace it. And they're very, very excited about this facility.
So is this kind of the adjoining piece to the ones that we were just talking about?
No, this is the property directly across from the new hospital that comes up against the railroad, the railroad trail property, just east of the microcord.
Oh, okay, yeah, okay.
And so that's, the state purchased this property. So this is all real, huh?
They have spent, they spent quite a bit of money doing this, so this is...
That's pretty impressive.
What is the timeline for this project?
2022, they're gonna finish?
Yeah. No, they wanna start right away. They're very excited.
When are they breaking ground?
Pretty soon.
Wow.
Yeah.
Huge improvement. Are those two or four bedroom rooms? Do you know by chance?
They're dormitory, so I think they're doing more than that.
Oh, they're doing dorms there?
So we're envisioning groups of kids from 18 to 21 years old, basically living in this. And then they head to town every night and do business and...
And then also, the CCC would also be available locally, then?
Yes. And they want, they wanna be hired for projects. That's the main point, is they're a bunch of, they're learning all these skills. They wanna be hired to do things outdoors.
They've already committed to helping us build the railroad trail project, as well as move on doing, maybe, hopefully get it constructed.
What about working on the green belt, like the trails up there?
Yeah, I think they get funding every year for that type of project. Really, I think this year, first, we're around the airport.
That's right, the airport.
But we're gonna yield dibbies first, okay?
And so not only will they provide all this wonderful labor and they're learning skills and a lot of...
Look at that, that's a solar ray right there, and then that's a walking path around, I believe, or the left portion of the property.
And would it be open to the public at all, or does it limit that?
I'm anxious to talk to them about that, because there's an opportunity to connect that trail, it seems like, with our railroad trail.
And I believe that they said that both the educational facilities and the sports facilities are something that we could possibly tap into.
Open to public use?
Yeah, yeah, or organized public use.
Right, they've got some, like, meeting rooms, conference room type stuff that could be of benefit if it's...
So anyway, so that was a really great meeting we had, and I just wanted to show you. And they, as they're developing their plans, they would like to come and do an in-person presentation to you. But I sort of wanted to get this in front of you as soon as possible, except I'm excited by this. I did talk to, I was gonna talk to you about our insurance bad news. One thing I did wanna clarify is that it was brought up by a speaker earlier on whether our, some of our claims history affected our property insurance. And I wanted to let you know that some of our claims history that he mentioned actually affected our liability insurance, but not our property insurance. Property insurance in general, because of California wildfires and floods and all of the events that California has experienced, is because we are in a terrible market now. And we have been assured by RE/MAT that they have shopped around quite a bit. The market is just terrible. So I have nothing good to say. The one thing that I will probably bring forward to you at our next meeting is the concept of earthquake insurance. We did receive a quote for earthquake insurance. I was a little bit surprised by it. It was in the $55,000 a year category. We did not budget for it because it had not been budgeted before. And it's something to think about, whether or not we actually want to spend that kind of money for earthquake insurance. And it's something to think about, whether or not we actually want to spend that kind of money for earthquake insurance. Given that if there's a large earthquake event, typically there are agencies like FEMA and whatnot that step forward, or California Office of Emergency Services, so it is a way that we can save a little money. And I'm gonna actually ask you for permission to do that, but I won't do that till next week, because it's not only agenda.
And typically, at least for homeowners, that is enormous deductibles, so...
And this would have enormous deductibles as well. Well, everything that we are buying right now has big deductibles.
So we need to consider that, and, you know, the cost benefit ratio of spending money for an insurance policy that doesn't fit in until you've bankrupted yourself already.
So, it's just something to think about. I'm trying to think of any way I can to cut costs, and that is one of them. And I think that that's something I would like to just put in front of people. I also received a call from Robert Ireland from the American Legion. They are having a Patriot celebration on September 11th, at 11:45 in front of the high school. They have invited the mayor to speak. If the mayor is unable to speak, the mayor may designate someone else to speak. It's a 15-minute ceremony, and they invite the entire council to come out for the Patriots Day ceremony.
At what time?
That is at 11:45 in front of the high school on September 11th, I believe. Matt was there last year, you made, spoke?
Yes.
He was very nice, yeah. I also distributed in all your boxes a little letter regarding our PG&E 20A funds, where our resolution was accepted, it was blast, we got a letter that outlined all the different jurisdictions that had money taken out of their funds, and we were not one of them, and I was pretty proud of that. So we have documentary evidence that our funds will stay whole, and thank you for passing that resolution in favor of the undergrounding. Lastly, music in the park is a go. It went together very quickly, we've been busy, but it looks like we're going forward. It starts September 12th. Our first band, I didn't go down the bands. We have a number of bands. The first band is a swing and jazz ensemble. They're wildly talented. And I'm gonna give you their names next time, or I will email them to you. We have a number, I sent out an email asking for donations from various businesses. I got an amazing response. People really love this, and they, I got checks in the mail, it was great. We've got Adventist Health, Metal FX, The Skunk Train, Solid Waste of Willets. And again, we have the, our donations from the spring, or year-round donations, because they were large donations, from Canapark, Emerald City, Vegan Buddha, Organic Flowers, Dogwood Modular Processing Systems, and Nuestra Alianza, as well as Willetts Power and Equipment, who are gonna be providing lights. This is gonna be on Thursday evenings, starting September 12th. It's gonna be 6:00 to 7:30. And we just pulled this together, and it'll be a fun time, so I hope you...
How many are gonna be serious?
We're gonna have four.
Four, are they a week apart?
Yes, four concerts. The first one's swing and jazz, the second one is the, is a folk trio, is the Real Saras.
Oh, yeah.
And they're a local group, they're very popular, and they have some albums out. Third group is Funkacillin, our local talents, a great funk band, local funk band. And the last is a ruckus, country western bands, the Johnny Young Band, and they play in town. They should be a lot of fun, so that's it for, gonna close my report.
Kathy?
I do. This weekend is Airport Day, Saturday, the 17th, from 9:00 to 3:00. We are, we've had a great response with this from our airport tenants. They have all pitched in and helped out tremendously. They've made phone calls, people have come up with their planes, for helicopter rides, airplane rides. I believe we have three people, four people that are gonna do that. We have local fire crews that are going to be there, shifters, let's see, who else? California Highway Patrol is bringing planes. I believe the Coast Guard is bringing planes. So we have quite a few coming, so we're really excited. Everybody's working on the grounds. That will be happening over the next two days, so we're hoping that all of you will make it.
Alright, how about our fire chief?
Just a quick update. We have an email recently that, it looks like our plans will come to the city for the firehouse in roughly three weeks. That puts us two and a half months behind, but they are in progress. Everybody asked the question, when's the firehouse gonna be built? We are moving in that direction. It looks like the demolition of the structures in there, the house and the, and the main building will be pulled out of the RFP and be done separate. There'll be two separate RFPs for that project. We have just completed the hazardous materials inspection for asbestos and lead paint, and the results aren't back to that. Once that's done, we'll build, we'll work with our consultant to build that RFP and get those buildings gone. I know the public's interested in seeing it forward, and it's been a long process, and it continues to still provide for being a long process. That's where we're at at this point. If there are any questions, send them our way. We are moving forward. Everything looks like it's just running a little late. I'm hoping that the weather doesn't affect us too bad as we move forward. There is a timeline on the project, money-wise, and so we gotta get it done, and it will get done.
Are you gonna have an open house at the other station, where you're operating at now?
Probably not. It's not very conducive to that. You know, we're, some of the stuff we normally do publicly is gonna be put on hold a little bit for, until this project's built, but the things like the water fight, the open houses that we hold, those will all come back pretty heavy once the, once the new firehouse...
I know you ended up postponing your fundraiser, right?
Yeah, that was, we made a mistake of putting 74 East Commercial Street on the tickets for the return address. Our association did. We've had big problems just getting our PG&E bill forwarded to the right address, let alone, you know, 2,000 or 3,000 tickets. So we postponed that a little bit to give time for those to come through the postal process and get to the firehouse. And they're coming through. It's working.
Yeah, I know, I filled mine out and sent them in, and then realized, oh, that's like tomorrow, I'm thinking, well, it's a donation anyway, and then, then I read the article in the paper that said it was...
Yeah, we want everybody to have a fair shake of being in the drawing, so we had, we had to postpone a little bit to make sure that all the tickets came in. So thank you.
Do you have any fire public reminders?
Yes, fire safety, it is fire season, we can do that. You know, just for, just for clarity, with, we've talked a lot about the public safety power shutdowns, that's on everybody's mind, and as we move a little closer into September and October, fire danger becomes apparently higher here, glaringly higher. And, you know, go to PG&E's website, go to the city's website, look on social media. I'm really worried about the generator safety. I'll be 100% honest with you. I think that we've probably increased our fire danger. I know that it might let PG&E off the hook with fire danger coming from their power lines and red flag warnings and with the public safety power shutdowns. However, I think that we've actually increased overall our fire danger due to people, the way they hook their generators they buy for $500 from Tractor Supply into their homes, and how they're gonna fuel them and pay attention to those. We're worried about that, and we'll see how it is moving forward. Hopefully there are no incidents at all.
And thank you for mentioning our website. We did put a flyer on generator safety, it's on our website, along with a lot of information on PSPSSs.
Any other questions for them? Thank you.
Police chief?
Scott Warnock, the police chief. I'll try to go through this quickly. Update on the emergency operations plan. We hope to have the actual plan, we being me, and, and the other department heads, as well as our consultant, to have the basic plan done by the end of August. That's a goal, that's not a promise. Now, there's what's called annexes. To me, they're appendixes, but annexes that are gonna take much longer, because they have specific plans for each department. So we're gonna have to work on that and have training, desktop training, to tighten them up. The city council approves the emergency operation plan, but the annexes, they don't, because they have to constantly be updated. And all of this will be public, it'll be on our website, and like I said, we're trying to get that done as soon as possible. When do we talk about the K-9?
That's actually a scheduled item, we can...
Okay, I'll skip that. We also, we have the ham radio for the emergency operations center. I've made arrangements with the county IT radio department to install it, and they know that they're gonna do it sooner than later, because we never know when we're gonna have an emergency and need that. We've had some personnel changes. Corporal D'Horatio left us on, he's the K-9 officer, left us. His last day was the 10th. He now works for Mendocino County Sheriff's Office. Another officer just gave me notice before I walked over here. He's leaving the 8th of September to the Mendocino County Sheriff's Department. And I had another officer tell me this morning, he's applied at Sonoma County Sheriff's Department, or Sheriff's Office. And he's been a police officer for less than two years, and when he gets hired, he will make what I make as a deputy. So, it's a, I understand, I don't like people leaving, but I understand that kind of incentive for them to leave. The police department, the front of it, the county is doing an ADA upgrade. So for this week, and hopefully not past next week, the police department is closed in the front. We're still open for business, we have signs, they can use, the intercom has been working pretty well. The ADA update is to lower the counter for wheelchair access. Today, I just issued $10,000 worth of LEAA warrants. Don't ask me what LEAA means, because I've forgotten. But these are to anti-gang organizations like youth football, what's the name of the? Yeah, the Boy Scout troop and Bechtel Grove Web Program, where the eighth graders help the sixth graders adjust. If anybody in the community has a program that helps keep kids off of drugs and lessens their chance of belonging to a gang, and it's a K through 12 youth program, they need to write me a letter, and I still have funds that I can distribute. The, just, just as a background, the LEAA funds, that I don't know what it stands for, it's a portion of asset, the asset forfeiture funds, and it's governed by the state, and...
The Health and Safety Code.
Thank you, chief. Well, I do appreciate the help. They, this county does it differently. It's the, it was the sheriff who distributes the funds, but this county made the agreement that all of the heads of the, all the police organizations get to distribute their funds to their area. So we're lucky we get to do that.
When did that take effect?
About 20 years ago.
We've been giving...
Every year we do it.
Well, I, okay, I'm only confused, because an organization that I'm part of submitted a letter to the county a few years...
It's off, it's common that they'll submit it to multiple places. There's nothing wrong with that, but, you know, I consider how much I'm gonna give them if they've also socked funds elsewhere. But there's nothing wrong with that. So if your organization's not too late to submit a letter. Every year, I give kind of stats for the police department. This year, I, I want to create a much more comprehensive state of the police department with, excuse me, training, things we've accomplished, statistics, comparisons to last, the last year's, et cetera. So I will, in the future, be doing that. It'll be a document I present after I do an oral presentation, and it'll be available to the public and also posted on the website. I want to, a little teaser, a little teaser here, though. In fiscal year 2017-18, we had 11,700 incident reports. This fiscal year, or this last fiscal year, 18-19, we had 12,884. That's up 1,184 incidents. And that's 1,288 incidents per officer. We wrote 832 full reports. That's not including the CAD reports that are for documentation. There's probably over 1,000 of those. We arrested 416 people last fiscal year. We wrote 541 traffic citations. 210 were parking, and 331 were as a result of traffic stops. And I'll go through, I'm not gonna list all of these, but we investigated, our had calls for 69 assaults, 51 burglaries, 85 child abuses, 439 disturbance calls, 60 physical domestic violence calls, 80 drunken public, 138 DUIs, 19 elder abuse, 66 fraud, 37 hit and run, 108 mental illness calls, 154 missing persons reports, 317 parking complaints, 32 shots fired, 428 suspicious person calls, 158 traffic collisions that were reported. Two of them were fatal, 237 thefts, 239 trespassing calls, 39 vehicle thefts, and 129 welfare checks, and there were 19 deaths in the city last fiscal year. That is my report. Any questions?
Well, I'll take this for Stephanie.
Oh, I just, oh, did you have a question for me?
Well, sort of the...
It may be the same thing we're gonna talk about.
So, you've got some folks leaving, and I know that we've given it as a council direction not to fill positions, but I'm kind of feeling like, if nothing else, I'd like to give them the latitude to at least fill one for now until we know a little more about our budget, because I, you know...
You were reading my mind. I think that we were anticipating that we would lose an officer, which, when I was, when I asked you to approve a freeze, I was thinking of freezing one position. I feel very uncomfortable about freezing three. I think that would leave us very understaffed. It takes a long time to hire a police officer, so I would like to start a hiring process. It doesn't, I mean, right now we have just one vacancy, but it looks like another one is imminent, and I would like to go ahead and start recruiting.
Absolutely, that was my question to you.
In anticipation, we, we have two of our officers at College of the Redwoods attending class for their FDO update, Field Training Officer Updates. And we are, I told the sergeant who's up there today, I sent him the flyers that start recruiting, and let them know, we don't know if we're gonna be able to fill the positions or not, but it's great to get them straight from the academy, so.
Do we need a motion or a direction?
No, just direction is fine. Three of you nod your heads, I'm good.
If they want a position right now, at least, get the ball game.
So, so my understanding is that we're freezing, at this point, we're freezing one position, and when the other two leave, we'll start recruiting now, but
Yes, yes.
we can start working on filling in. Okay, thank you very much.
Dusty, do you have anything?
Is that you, thank, yeah? Tired of hearing my voice. I am. So just a, just a quick update on a couple items. At the last council meeting, the council authorized staff to go ahead and submit a grant application through the SB 2 funds to pay for preparation of a Sphere of Influence Amendment for the city of Willets. Somehow, some way, we were able to get that done, and we've gone ahead and submitted that grant. It's still not clear whether or not our project proposal is gonna be an eligible project under the grant program, and it's also not clear that it's enough money, $160,000, to fund what we're trying to do. But we will soon find out, and if it is determined to be an ineligible project, I'll be back in front of the council with some other potential ideas for you guys to figure to make use of the money for. My understanding from talking to state staff is, by us meeting the deadline, which is tomorrow... My understanding from talking to state staff is by us meeting the deadline, which is tomorrow, that if it is determined to be an ineligible project, that, that we will be offered the opportunity to present a different project. So I'm excited to say that that got done. Council's also aware that we are moving through the selection process for, to allow for up to three dispensaries to operate within Willets. Per our cannabis ordinance, we identified a competitive process to go through. And the dispensary selection committee was able to select three different applicants to make their way through the process. And a fourth was unfortunately, was not allowed, because they didn't score higher than the other three. I'm not gonna announce who those people are, because I haven't had the time, since we made the decision yesterday, to contact every one of the applicants. So at the next meeting, I will certainly note that at the public meeting. I do wanna just briefly talk about the process that we went through. The committee members included myself, Michelle Johnson, our Assistant Planner, Code Enforcement Officer, our Chief of Police, Scott Warnock, as well as the two community members that were appointed by this council. But we also had an alternative community member that followed us through the process as well, even though she wasn't able to be one of the final people voting at the end. We had an initial meeting where we, we made sure to get everybody on the same page and understand the role of the committee, and handed out a bunch of information from the applicants. So they got a ton of big homework assignment. It was obvious that everyone did a good job of reading through the material and developing good input as far as scoring the final applicants. We also met as a group and went on a tour of all the proposed locations for the dispensaries. Was able to meet with prospective applicants at the site, get an understanding of where the facility would be at. And then, myself excluded, the rest of the committee was actually able to then go take tours of existing dispensaries throughout the county to get a better sense of the different types of dispensaries that are out there. And then finally, we met as a group yesterday and scored the applications and came to the conclusion. And again, I'll report that out at the next meeting after I've had an opportunity to contact the applicants first. We went on a worldwide search for a new building official. And we were able to find somebody from as far away as Willets. So, Mr. Davy Bolz is our new building inspector slash code enforcement officer. And, yeah, I'm very happy to introduce him to you. And I'll say that he's hit the ground running. He's already gained the confidence of myself, our former building officials in John Sherman and Christopher Morgan, as well as our part-time building official or interim, Dean Fuller. And I, I think we made a great decision. Yeah, happy to introduce Mr. Davy Bolz.
Thanks, Mark, for the introduction. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions here?
You wanna tell us, tell us, I guess, tell the, the public a little bit about yourself, whatever you wanna share?
So Davy Bolz, I originally grew up in Lakeville, so I'm close to hometown of Willets. I lived in Sacramento for about 13, 14 years. We wanted to find a place with a better community. And in Sacramento, as far as commuting and not knowing anybody, I talked my wife into moving to Willets. We moved back here, we've been here about six years now. And I really enjoy the City of Willets. And I'm really excited about working for it.
And you have family here, too, then, I was...
Yep, and my brother lives here, my sister lives here, and my parents live in Lakeville.
Right, then. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
You'll find, you'll be in one of the high-profile positions based on...
I can imagine.
And you've been in the trades, right?
Yes.
So you'll hopefully hit there. Folks around here will get to know you soon enough, and so...
I know quite a few of them, so...
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. June, do you have anything?
One thing, is this everybody all standing up? I guess I got standing up. Good news. Yes, we just did reconcile a landfill for the bills for 18-19, fiscal year 18-19. So we're planning to send to the county in the next few days, so pretty much. And then we can see where we go from there. So this is the first round. And then, actually, it didn't, I have staff work on that for a couple of days. But we will continue to doing that, you know, go 17-18 fiscal year, and then 16-17, and then all central county, and then see where we can, you know, land up with the county. I'm pretty sure there's a little bit of juggling, because the number's gonna get huge. Because we're expecting about around $70,000 average for every fiscal year getting reimbursed from the county. You know, county has their budget issues, so probably has a juggling. But at least, right now, we're starting on the process. We're sending them in to see where we goes. So it's in progress on this year. Regarding 19-20, we aren't setting the budget, but the county says, we're gonna reimburse you. We're not paying you first. We just reimburse you with our natural cost. That's why we're starting 18-19 and going backward on that way. Yeah. That's my part of good news, something.
All right. Think we got everybody?
Yeah.
So, discussion and possible action approving plans and specifications for Maple Pump Station Project and authorizing advertisement for informal bids.
Hello. Suzanne Lutzis, Assistant Engineer for the City. Yeah, so I'm here to ask for your approval and to discuss putting the Maple Pump Station project out for advertisement for informal bids through approval. The pump station, if you wanna call it that, is in need of some upgrades. It's outside right now. It just is, it's surrounded by fence and barbed wire, but it's completely outside. So when the guys have to go out there and work on it, especially in the winter and the rain and in the dark, it's a very unpleasant experience. The pump station only has one pump right now, which itself is a problem. There really should be two motors or pumps at any pump station. So this project will address that problem. It will also encase the pumps in a house, provide lighting, and also give us the ability to fill the tank that the pumps feed faster by putting the pumps on together, if we choose to do that. We don't plan on doing that regularly, but we would have that option in the future if we wanted to. Also, it could give us a better ability to deal with fire, too, by providing that extra pressure with the second pump on.
Where's the access to the pump?
The access to the pump is, you know where Suprema lives? It's right there. If you basically look at the empty lot right next to her house, it's up on the hill. It's behind the fence there.
It sits right, actually, next to the property line?
Yeah, yeah.
It's literally right on the property line?
Yeah, it's right, it's right on the property line. So what we're gonna do is, we thought it would be fair to move it to the middle of the property. So it's hopefully not any kind of nuisance, or less of a nuisance to either person on either side. So we decided to put it in the middle of the property. And then down just a little bit, just because it's better to build on a flat ground.
And we have an easement either way, or that one?
We have an easement.
Right, that one is, it should have been a street, but has never been developed. And the, we have an easement on, off of, uh, the street?
The whole piece, I think, is an easement.
It's not an easement, it's that we own the piece.
I don't think we own the piece, actually. I think it's an easement. Yeah.
I thought we owned the bottom part, but the top part, we may own a strip. We own it all. We own it all?
Yeah.
Yes.
Hmm, okay.
Yeah.
Not what I, not my understanding, but, okay.
There's some confusion over it being a city piece of land and been referred to as Maple Street. So we're calling it the Maple Street Pump Station. Is it, is it a street or not a street?
No.
It's not a street.
It's not a street. And we talked about...
It's referred to as Maple Street, which can be confusing.
Well, I think the plan at one point was to go up the hill, and it just never happened. So it was never a dedicated street. But I think we own the property, I think.
Yeah.
So, I would, I'd be curious, you know, not, not for tonight, but I would be curious to find out how much of it is ours, or whatever, just... I know that we went through several years ago, and I wasn't on the council then, but there was an issue with the property owner on the, on the next street over putting a garden or something in it.
It sounds like it's ours.
It seems like we should know.
It sounds like we do know, right?
So...
We own the property. Take my word for it.
Yeah.
Well, the, so currently, the only access to the pump station for repairs is off of Mendocino Avenue?
No. There's another access, it's a foot trail. But if you go from Redwood Avenue, you have to go down a driveway, which is private. And then there's a foot path.
Which was gonna lead to my next question. In order to, to access it, you do have to cut through that narrow blackberry bushes to get there. Is there a longer-term plan to, to create a secondary access point for the pump station? Or will, will it only be on the Mendocino Avenue?
I think that would be the main, I mean, we still have the existing path. We can still use it. But you can see from the plan that we plan on putting a driveway, a gravel driveway up to the new pump house for ease of access off of West Mendocino. And one, and just also, just kind of a side note off that topic is, we did talk about, you know, actually leaving the pump house to one side or the other of the property, and actually discussed the possibility of, of making a road there. And because that was a plan at some time, I don't know when, or the reasons behind that, but it just doesn't seem feasible anymore. Like I said, on the other side, there's private driveway. I mean, people are using it in a totally different way. And the city, as far as I know, has no interest in creating a road there at this point. So we decided to put it in the middle.
Somebody had just asked me, just a day or two ago, about the abandoned orchard that was on the other side of the blackberry bushes in that space, wanting to know if the city was going to, if the orchard was going to continue there, or if anybody was gonna maintain it. So I was just wondering, if part of this project was cleaning up that hole through, or it's just focused on the side that where the, where it's currently clear, it's gonna be that side right there?
That's the focus of this project.
Okay. And then, will the water be turned off to any of the, to the neighborhood at all?
Temporarily.
And is it like a couple of hours, a day, two days?
It should just be a couple hours. We have the tank up top that can feed everyone, which actually should be sufficient for the project, but there is that potential that it wouldn't be for some reason. But we expect that it, it's, water service should be available to everyone during that time. But we will have to actually shut the valves off on either end of the project area just to tie in. So there's a potential of not having water, but it's not likely.
And I thought I saw what looked like a generator that's nearby. Is that related to preparedness for the fire? I suspected it was, but people have been asking me about it.
We're prepared.
And is that what we would find at other pump stations? That we have, we have one of those areas?
Do we own them or are we renting those?
Those are ones we own, I believe.
It said Willet's Power.
Oh, then those are rental ones, okay. We have, we have a combination, so that's one of our rental ones.
Okay, 'cause I wasn't aware that we had them in each pump station.
Yeah, I know, we're ready.
Okay.
Yeah.
So if you're turning on and off valves, is it a possibility? And if so, will we be letting the community, at least the neighbors, know that that is a potential?
I don't think it will, it shouldn't, because we'll turn, well, actually, Suprema, you are right in the middle of that.
Last time...
I have to say, your service is right in the middle of that.
Well, last time our yard flooded when the pump station broke. All the water rushed in to our property, because we're so close. And I'm wondering if, when that happens, if we can expect to see that kind of...
Well, because we, we know when we'll need to flush the line, it can be better controlled.
So maybe they can water your lawn for a couple days ahead.
Well, it doesn't go into the lawn, it goes right into the cement and into the home.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so it would be nice...
'Cause your property's kinda drops down right there?
My property drops down slightly.
Well, I'll be...
Enough that the water rushes right towards the end of the home.
I'll be around and make sure that that does not happen.
Stand back, Sophia.
A little question, is there any conflict of interest issue here?
I'm not voting, I'm asking.
Well, 'cause if, if, if you're not gonna vote, I think technically, we're not supposed to have you discuss it either, but I don't know. I wanted to ask.
Well, I think you said it was...
This doesn't add a benefit to the property, to her property.
I don't believe so. This is, this is akin to the improvements in storm drains and water mains issues, I think, 'cause...
And I'm okay refrating and just simply asking questions, yeah.
Yeah, no. And they have tried to limit the work hours a little bit on this one, too. So it doesn't start real early, or end really late.
Keep it, yeah, there's a lot of school traffic on that street, too.
There's a lot of school traffic on that street. So we're hoping, I mean, if the weather holds out, and with your permission, obviously, it would be nice if it would get constructed this year. But if not, then we'd like to, you know, put it out to bid, get somebody under contract, and have it ready to go for when the weather clears up. But I think it's an important project, really, for the water distribution system. I was pretty shocked, actually, when I went over there and saw the pump station.
We've had issues in the past, right, at that pump station?
Yeah, yeah.
So this would be an overall improvement to all customers?
And so that pump was replaced, I think it was, back when you were talking about. I wanna say it might have been two years ago. So it's a fairly new pump. So what we'll do is, we'll just keep that pump online while everything gets constructed for the new pump house and the second pump gets put on. We'll test it all. We'll leave that pump on for as long as possible with all the electric hooked up as long as possible till we at the very last second turn everything off and switch it over. But at that point, we should already have the one pump already tied in.
Will we recycle that pump as a spare, or some...
It'll actually be moved down to the house.
Okay.
Because it's only a couple of years old, so it'll actually be there. We're just getting the exact same pump, just another one.
Okay. Any questions up here, or was this gonna... Anybody out there that wants to ask questions, or?
Do you, just, do you feel, do you feel comfortable with the property ownership? Question lingering? Do you feel like I need to follow up with you about that? Okay. I just wanna make sure everyone's good. I, that's...
I'm more concerned with exercising and cleaning up what we've got. And so that, I think the orchard there was an experiment letting adjoining property owners approach our land, if I remember...
Oh.
And so, and so my concern is just that if you need to get in there and work on that pump, I don't want you, like Suprema was saying, if there's something you need to fix or why you're doing this, or maybe it's another project for another day, then I just wanna make sure that you can get in and do the work, or the water folks can get in and do the work they need to do, so that we can get our water stuff up and running as quick as possible. Because brown water or not, people wanna flush their toilets, so...
Yeah, yeah.
So I'm of approval of the staff committee. Do I have a second?
A second.
And any further discussion? Anybody out there? Last chance, okay. All those that favor, roll call them.
Hi. Councilmember Con?
Yes.
Reddick? Holmstein?
Strong?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Mary Gonzalez?
Yes. Suzanne, are you going to be discussing our next one, or?
Mm-hmm, yep. So, next, I'd like to, what are we talking? I'd like to ask your permission to award a professional services contract to SHN Consulting Engineers and Geologists for an on-call materials testing contract, not to exceed $25,000. Basically, we need materials testing for a lot of the projects that we do, most of the capital improvement projects. This includes compaction testing in the trenches when we do sewer water storm drain. It includes concrete tests, and it includes asphalt testing. Most of the materials testing is for concrete and asphalt. Very little is for the trenches, actually. So it does appear in the budget as a line item under the half-cent sales tax, because we expect most of that...
because we expect, um, most of that materials testing to be used for those purposes. Uh, we do keep an eye on the projects, and when we estimate our projects, we, we, we estimate how much is gonna be spent on half-cent sales tax, water, sewer, so, um, usually the materials testing for water and sewer portion is very, very low. Um, and when we, when we estimate the project and we split it, um, to the different fund or charge, um, the different funds for the projects, like, it would consider part of that materials testing, but it does appear in the budget as a half-cent sales tax item, just because we expect most of it cumulatively to be, um, taken from that fund. Does that make sense?
So, I have a question regarding, and I'm sure this is why you're going out, but there's nobody on staff, and this is not included in our contract with, uh, um...
Laco.
Thank you, Laco, for these services.
Um, it could be, um, the idea behind this, as you can see, is twenty-five thousand dollars, and we have seventy thousand, I believe, with Laco for the year, so twenty-five is kind of a big chunk of that. So we didn't really wanna use it, um, uh, under that contract for that reason. Um, and we also wanted to also give the opportunity to other people in the area for the work as well, um.
Um, yeah, there's always an issue, since we have a contract engineer, um, the, the, the question comes up as whether we're sole sourcing too many materials, so when we do have projects over a certain size, we do try to put them out to the public bid, so it doesn't look like we're giving all of our business to one company. Um, it's just a fairness sort of thing, so we try to do that, spread the, spread the love around a little bit.
Yeah, and what we did, um...
And we did open it up for Laco to respond to that as well.
We sent it to SHN and Laco, um, this round, just because those are the people in the area that we know provide the services, SHN was the only one to respond to that. However, um, our plan would be, um, to use Laco if we needed to, if SHN wasn't available for some reason. But we have used SHN in the past for several projects, and because they are in town, it's very convenient to call them when we need them, and we've always been happy with their work doing the materials testing.
Larry has a question.
Uh, are you aware that SHN, um, created the sewer plant, or the wastewater plant?
I am.
And also inspected it?
I am.
And also was in on the suit from Brock Crails? They were the ones that were causing the trouble? And, uh, I, I was lobbied by a different, a person in the city staff to vote for this, because I told myself and everybody around me that I would never go for anybody, anything from SHN again, 'cause we really got the short end of the stick on with this.
I heard about that.
And, uh, so consequently, um, I would go along with the twenty-five, but if it doesn't work out really well, uh, you won't ever get a good vote for me from, through SHN again. They really took it to the cleaners, the city.
Yeah, we wanted to work out well too.
And I was on the council, and the only one that was on the council, that was at that particular time.
I mean, really, um, usually, we, we do separate contracts, like, per, per job, for, per project, for materials testing, and, and like I said, we, we've just had good success with them. It's in our interest to stay with someone that we work well with and we feel is doing a good job. Um, we, we went to this approach this time just because we are so busy, that it really will help us, we feel, cut down on, you know, the paperwork, honestly, of having to do individual contracts, you know, seven thousand dollars here, seven thousand dollars there. You know, it doesn't sound like much, but it adds up when you have, you know, four people that do, you know, a zillion things, so. Um, we're, this is just one more way that we're trying to create some efficiency within our office. So, um, you know, if it doesn't work out for us as well internally, I would expect that we wouldn't come back with another recommendation similar to this.
I have a very, very quick, that, uh, the, this, the title in the staff report and on, uh, on our agenda should say, not, um, on-call materials testing contract.
Oh, right.
Yeah, um, and, you know, and I, I share Larry's concern that SHN had a not-good track record on the sewage treatment plant, but, um, hopefully, they know what they're doing on materials testing, and we'll find out.
I think, yeah, I mean, we've had good success with them, and, um, you know, I don't know their business, and I know there's a long story with the wastewater treatment plant and all that, but, um, I just see this as almost like a separate branch within their...
And it's very convenient to...
Their company.
Have someone local be able to do that on short notice, and it makes sense.
So, I'm gonna, while you're still up there, I'm gonna ask if anybody from the public wants to ask any questions. Okay. Um, and before you run off after we vote on this, I, I wanna ask you one quick question. Uh, but right now, I'm looking for a motion.
Uh, we'll move it after, uh, the staff recommendation.
Do I have a second?
One second.
Okay, any further discussion? Involved money there, lady, so.
Councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Reddard?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes, I guess.
Mary Gonzalez?
Yes, uh, this is really, you don't know how hard this is.
I, I, I detect some hesitancy there.
So Suzanne, you alluded to how much work you guys have, how much workload right now, and I just, I tried to reach you this week, and would you characterize right now the engineering department as at full capacity, with everything you've got going? If I...
It's just amazing, really, how even one proj- how much work one project is, and, um...
So if I showed up on your, on your doorstep wanting to, to throw another project on you right now, you probably would clear air.
I'd probably close the doors.
Okay.
No, I mean, you know, ob- obviously, if you really come there, I'm gonna listen to you.
Oh, I know.
But, but...
At your capacity, is what I'm hearing.
Just know inside my mind that I'll be not so happy about that.
Well, I, I'm asking for other reasons, but I just wanted to make sure. I, I've gotten the impression, when I've talked to you guys and whatever, that you guys are all focused on...
We're booked up right now.
Thank you, that's a good way of putting it, so.
Yeah.
Thank you, all right.
But, yeah, we, we do try and be nice and polite, so we will try to listen.
All right, thank you.
Can I just say that Larry and I have had a couple of meetings with the engineering department, and I've had a couple of email exchanges with Jeremy regarding Sherwood Road, and you all, too, uh, every, every person in the office have been exceptionally responsive and articulate and friendly and welcoming.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Thank you, yeah, and not to, I, we don't mind talking, but...
Just don't expect...
No more projects for you.
No more projects.
All right, thank you. All right, chief, you're on.
Sorry, Stephen Palmer. So as I mentioned earlier, the K-nine officer, um, went to sheriff's department. Uh, he was trained less than a year ago with the, the K-nine that we purchased, um, and, uh, pretty much they're a matched pair. You, you can, it is possible to train the K-nine with another handler, but we don't plan to have another handler for quite a while. This is the fourth K-nine we've lost, three to the sheriff's department, some of them before my time. So, also with, uh, the budget, I don't want to stretch the, you know, with a frozen position, I don't wanna stretch the department thinner by sending somebody to the K-nine school. So, uh, it's gonna be a while till we even reconsider having another K-nine. In the meantime, the sheriff's department reached out to me, and, uh, I think made a very reasonable offer for the K-nine. Uh, I tried to get more, but, um, they, they're basically, uh, pay, uh, offered to, uh, pay us for, um, what, what the K-nine actually cost and what the equipment cost. Um, and I think that, I think it's a, uh, ten thousand dollars is a fair, uh, price. Um, I tried to get them to pay for some of the training, but they said they couldn't do that. The, the original, the money was taken from the DA asset, or, excuse me, the DA restitution fund. The DA restitution fund is a fund, um, that is distributed through law enforcement agencies from the DA's office, when, um, mostly it's been marijuana, where people are charged with, or have been charged with cultivation, et cetera, and it's an offer of compromise instead of, uh...
Well, I was...
When you're going, instead of going criminally. Uh, I checked with the district attorney, he told me that, uh, these funds, unlike the asset forfeiture funds, are, um, unlimited in what we can use them for, we can supplant things, we can, we can use them for anything. And the recommendation is that, if approved, that the city manager can do this deal, is that we return the funds, not to the DA restitution fund, but into the general fund.
And is the DA's office saying that's okay?
Yes. They, and they said we could, we could spend it on street signs if we want. We could put a nice sign, "Welcome to Willets" if we wanted, uh, but that's not the intent of it, it's for, it's for law enforcement. But there is no limitation, no rules.
Any questions?
I just think that, uh, that the dog ought to go with a handler, and I think that that is the right way for, for the dog, looking from the dog's point of view, that, that it's been handled by this person, and to rake up the, the pair is not good. And, uh, so I, I, I wait till we move when we get around to that.
What kind of safeguards do we have, uh, in the, going forward, that the city doesn't commit to, uh, a K-nine program, again, only to have an officer leave shortly after this expenditure has been...
Would you repeat that, I didn't hear the first part.
What kind of safeguards do we have going forward, that we won't get into the situation again where we spend this money and then officer leaves, and we essentially have gotten nowhere and spent taxpayer money for a dog and training we no longer have?
You sound frustrated.
No, I'm not frustrated, I just...
I am extremely frustrated with the situation. He, he made a verbal guarantee to us, as did the three others, that they would not do that. And because of the history of it, um, he guaranteed that he would, and he did. Now, if, if you wanna look at the silver li- not the silver lining, but a positive part of this is, is that we will benefit from this dog. The, the sheriff's department will help us, this dog or some other dog, they help us with things. We, we work well together, so, that's a positive. There, and, there is no, we can't, we can't write a contract to them, we can't do anything like that. That's why I'm reticent to, to do it for a while.
I know, we'd love to have ten thousand back in the general fund, but is there something that the police department had that they, we, isn't funded, that they really needed, that would be a better fit for this ten thousand, since that is where the funds came from?
Overtime?
Yeah, in law.
Yeah.
Right now, they're terribly over budgeted on overtime, so.
So, so, speaking, speaking of which, I am allowed to spend overtime, uh, our asset forfeiture money for training, and I'm doing that. Um, we are replacing, uh, with that same fund, we have money enough to do a few, uh, security projects for city hall, um, and, as well as replace a motor in one of the vehicles, which is quite an expenditure. Uh, so, we do have, we do have some of that money that's not due, but money that is still to spend.
I just wanted to ask about what ballpark, amount of many did we invest in the training, or? Yeah, not this ten thousand that we're getting reimbursed for, but the training of this officer who...
So, so the training is, is initially, I can't remember, two weeks or four weeks, um, it's, it's, uh, some of that training has been reimbursed by the state. Uh, the dog and handler are required every two weeks to do training. So there's a day of training every two weeks since, since the initial training. I, I hesitate to ballpark it because, um, some of it's been reimbursed, et cetera, so, uh... It's, so every two weeks is five hundred dollars, it's been almost a year. Um, so a thousand dollars a month, plus the initial training, that I believe a lot has been reimbursed.
And the...
So about a lot, so probably fifteen thousand dollars in training.
And the sheriff's department says that they're not allowed to reimburse us any of that?
The undersheriff checked with county council, and, um, it, it's a dicey situation, they're hiring somebody from us. It's like they would pay for past training, it's not done, I guess.
In other words, they negotiated and they refused.
And, and that seems to be the issue.
I felt like, uh, I felt like, uh, when you go to, uh, to buy a car, and, and I'm negotiating with, with them, and I said, "Sorry, I have to talk to my manager first," and so that's how it worked.
Three years ago, we were in the same situation, where a retiring officer was the K-nine handler, and we invested all this money in the, in the animal, in training, and then, and the purchase, and there wasn't a market for it, and, and anyway, the retiring officer purchased the dog for, I think, less than a hundred dollars.
No, yeah, less than a hundred dollars, it was one dollar.
One dollar, yeah.
But, but the dog turned out not to be a good dog, otherwise, we probably could have sold it. I, I tried to sell it, I went all over the state, Modock County, I mean, I didn't go there, trying to sell the dog, and nobody wanted it, 'cause the dog had a reputation. It was a very vicious dog. So we actually saved money through liability.
All right, I take it. And you're frustrated, unless anybody else has any other questions?
Yes.
Anybody from the public? All right, I'll bring it back up here for a motion.
Very well. I have a motion, just a second.
Oh, we have a motion in a second?
Who's the motion?
No, Larry May.
I made it, I made it, yeah, naturally.
The second is...
Who seconded?
I'll second it.
Okay, all right. Unless there's further discussion, I call for the vote.
Councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, reluctantly. All right. Well, city council committee boards agency reports.
Oh, okay, um, EDFC, the Economic Development Financing Corporation, met, I think it was Monday, for this week, are you sure? Anyway, I don't have my calendar in front of me, and Mary Gonzalez did, but, um, they have hired a new outreach loan person. I don't know what his title is, but they're very thrilled with him, he's full-time. His goal is to find good recipients for EDFC loans, uh, for new businesses, and EDFC has contacted me and wants to have some kind of an outreach, um, event here in Willets to encourage our entrepreneurs to come forward and start the process of getting more investment in our community, uh, building our businesses. So, um, I'm hoping that, well, we'll co-sponsor an event like that along with Chamber, and we'll be back when that happens. Um, and other than that, there was some pretty good report from the executive director on keeping our budget, and, you know, there've been some loans, some bad loans, and, and they're trying to, um, you know, keep replenishing the supply of funding and be able to repay their loans to the federal, uh, the, I guess it's Department of Agriculture loans. Anyway, the, uh, EDFC is going along fine. Next Thursday, a week from tomorrow, is gonna be the next, um, Solid Waste Management Authority meeting, and we did not meet in, uh, in July, but, uh, so this will be good. We're working with our interim general manager, and, uh, it'll be good to see how that's going.
Yep.
And that's it for Suprema.
Um, just one, uh, item, from when I served on the Caltrans committee, I had asked that, uh, for the first few days of school, that there were some modifications to the flow of traffic... to the flow of traffic, and thank you, Stephanie, for forwarding that. Nash responded several times to emails from Jeremy. It looks like there was a little bit of negotiation that went on, and eventually, the final outcome is that for the first three days of school, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, which is wonderful, from 6:00 AM to 9:30 AM, they'll have a flagger out there, flagging, which is better than just having a stop sign there. The traffic commute from Brook Trails will still, of course, be slightly slower, but that's really good news. So, thank you.
And we're also gonna have some police presence at that three-way stop, because apparently there's been reports of people floating through that stop sign, because they're used to the flagger, so.
On those three days, or in general?
We've already started doing it, but particularly on those days.
Okay.
When we're not responding to calls, we should be able to do that.
That's good to know.
I didn't receive any of those emails from Nash or Jeremy. May I request that I be included on that, because I'm on the Caltrans ad hoc committee?
Sure.
Thank you.
Larry, do you have anything?
Oh, I don't have email, I don't want an email either.
No. All right, the only thing, I did attend the Revwood Empire Division meeting for League of Cities in Point Arena last Friday, and I didn't stay for the dinner, because I had to be in San Diego the next day, so I, but there was some discussion there regarding climate change, that apparently was discussed at the, shoot, Coastal Commission, and League has a representative on there, and apparently, there's a lot of discussion happening around what's gonna happen to cities that are right there on the coast. And basically, Coastal Commission's kind of leading the discussion, but it's not like anybody's putting any money up. I mean, if you have property right next to the ocean and it comes up, you're gonna own some property underwater. But the concern is, it's kind of a regional thing, I mean, do people come here to go to the ocean? No, but they go through Willets, and Cloverdale, et cetera, and Sebastopol on their way to go to the coast, so it does have far-reaching concerns when it comes to all the cities in California. Apparently, and I'm not sure if there's, right now, the governor's doing some money for, for the whole fire thing and all of that, when you talk about climate change, but this was a concern that some of the cities, especially some of our cities in this county and up in Humboldt, Del Norte, et cetera, that are right on the coast. So that, there was some discussion there. We also kind of discussed the PG&E thing, that it's not an emergency according to FEMA, and so we're, I think there's, the message that League heard was, we need to start lobbying the state for something coming back, especially the small towns. The big towns, they've got the, they've got some infrastructure in place, but it's the small towns that don't have things like generators handy, et cetera, so whatever needs to happen there, that's, that was brought up. They, SB 2 passed in 2017, generating new funding for affordable housing, and they were talking about planning and grant technical assistance team will assist in the 2018 Planning Grant Program, and so there might be some grant opportunities there, they said, and then there were some reports from the different policy committees, and so we did have a legislative committee, but we had two bills that, and I'm not gonna go into them at this point, so, but, I mean, there's also, we had a nice little tour of Point Arena, they have a nice theater there that they use for, like theatrical performances, but they also show movies, first-run movies. It's, they went digital a couple of years ago, and it's community-funded, so it's kind of a neat thing. We did that, and we went on a tour of the college housing facility out there, and that's where we had our general meeting, was out there, so. Took longer to get there than the meeting.
The long drive.
Yeah, so, okay, that's all I have, and any good welfare?
Do council members report some?
Oh, sorry, let's, you there?
Okay, so it wasn't technically a Caltrans ad hoc meeting, but Larry and I did go down last week, last Friday, to the Caltrans Granite Partnering Meeting regarding the Caltrans, or the Sherwood Road Intersection Project. We talked at length about traffic on the beginning days of school, so I'm glad to hear that it has been resolved since then. They did let us know that Granite has been doing basically 24-hour-a-day work for the last two weeks, they were doing three shifts of eight hours, and that led to, after a rocky start on that project, them getting ahead two months of their time, their projected timeline for that project. So although they didn't get everything finished before school starts, they did get that one-way control traffic finished up. They are having some problems with their electrical contractor, and so the traffic lights won't be installed until a couple of days after school starts, probably not until August 23rd, but they are pushing them to try and get them out as quickly as possible. They also did think that they had handled that project really well, at least better than they had interacted with each other on the Main Street portion of things. Larry and I also met the week before with the city's engineering department regarding Sherwood Road paving project. So earlier this year, we all approved a contract to try and have Granite pave up that city's portion of Sherwood Road, from where this intersection project ends to the city limits. And Larry had some serious concerns about cracks that are starting to show in that road, and whether paving was a good idea, or the whole thing needed to be engineered. The engineering department met with us, heard the concerns, and then met with Rod, who went and looked at it and made his recommendation that paving would not be a good use of our money, and that we should engineer that road completely. So I think the new recommendation is to slurry seal to protect the road surface from further damage, but a couple of years out, look at doing a full project on Sherwood Road. So I just wanted to give my hats off to Larry for really sticking to his guns on that one, and the engineering department for taking his concerns seriously and coming up with a different recommendation, so I was pleased to be.
Thank you, Larry.
Involved in that.
Any other council member reports?
I just have good welfare.
Okay.
A good welfare.
Go ahead. Okay, the community bike ride that I mentioned before is happening on August 29th, 5:30 Thursday evening. We'll start at Red Grove, and we'll head down Commercial Street towards Main Street, and go, head south, with the intent to end up at the hospital, and then come back. There'll be bike helmets, education, the hospital will have a booth set up at Red Grove. The city is partnering with Public Health and Walk and Bike Mendocino to make sure that this is a safe event, and any support that council members can give in promoting this, to ensure that the community knows about it. We all keep hearing, nobody's using the bike lanes, or people don't know how to use the bike lanes properly, and so that's kind of how this project came about, was a conversation of what can we do to get people to use the bike lanes and use the bike lanes properly. And there's gonna be an article coming out in the newspaper about which direction you should be riding to, is it okay to ride on the sidewalk? Because there's.
There's a city ordinance that prevents you from riding on the sidewalk.
Yes.
It doesn't prevent, it makes it not legal.
It tries to prevent you from riding on the sidewalk.
So we'll, we'll be discussing that, and what should you do if you're a parent and you have a four- or five-year-old on a bike? Do they ride in the bike lane?
Oh, we cite those.
Do they ride, do they ride on the sidewalk? Should they go with the flow of the traffic? These are serious questions that people are having. Do you walk your bike across? So these are conversations that we're going to be having, to ensure that people are using bike lanes safely, and that they know what to do, because I hear these kinds of comments all the time. I saw my son the other day, and him and his three friends, they're 15-years-old, and they're riding on the sidewalk, and I said, "What are you doing? We got bike lanes." And they said, he said to me, "Mom, do you want me to get hit by a car?" So kids need to know how to use the bike lanes safely. And so that's the hope, is that we'll get a good turnout, and people will feel more comfortable, and hopefully cars will.
Cars.
See us out there, and we'll get some education on, you know. I think there was something about not passing in the bike lane, and I know we all see that. Every day, we see people passing in the bike lane, so. Anyway, I hope some education comes out of our.
Starts at 5:30?
It starts at 5:30, yeah.
I just wanted to announce that on September 1st, which is the Sunday of an everyday weekend, WELL is co-sponsoring, actually sponsoring, a movie, a pre-movie, and a discussion about climate crisis and local actions that people can take. The movie is called Paris to Pittsburgh, with the, that was inspired by the fact that when Trump took, you know, kind of took the US out of the Paris Agreement, and said that he cared about Pittsburgh and not Paris, and then Pittsburgh said, "Well, we care about Paris," and they are trying to implement the Paris Agreement locally. And so the movie is designed to be inspiring to, for local action, to meet our climate goals, so that our coastal cities don't go down underwater.
Any others, guys? Motion to adjourn.
All right.
Thank you, everybody.